Planning Commission meeting for the Provo City Planning Commission, January 25th, 2023. And we will start off our meeting tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance and Mr. Gonzalez will lead that for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation.
Okay, we have, I already forgotten, four agenda items tonight. And just so you know, in case this goes long, we will not begin discussing any of the agenda items that we haven't started yet after nine o'clock. We will have a roll call, starting with Mr. Whitlock. Tell us your name and whether you have any conflicts with the agenda items tonight.
Jeff Whitlock, no conflicts.
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Robert Knudsen, no conflicts.
Melissa Kendall, no conflicts.
Andrew South, no conflicts.
Okay. We will start with item number one. This item is administrative, which means that the planning commission will be making a decision on it and not just making a recommendation on it. Item number one, David D. Jeffs requests a revocation of a conditional use permit for a telecommunications monopole tower located at 1499 North, 2200 West in the agricultural zone. This is in the Grandview North neighborhood and Mr. Brandon Larson will present it to us.
Hello, commissioners, glad to be here with you this evening. Before I get into the meat of my presentation, I just wanted to, this is an unusual application. And so I want to just be clear about a couple of things. This is not an appeal of a conditional use permit. The time for an appeal of the conditional, of a conditional use permit has passed for this. This conditional use permit was granted on June 8th, 2022. And so anything related to the efficacy or whether or not the proceedings of the proceedings of that meeting, if the procedures were followed, those are just not germane to our, to the discussion tonight or your consideration. Again, since this is an administrative, you're the approval body, so this won't be going on to the county, to the city council. But up here, I want to point out to you that a conditional use permit may be modified or revoked if the planning commission finds one or more of the following. These six, these six findings before you are the only things really to be considered. These are the, in order for you to modify or evoke this, this conditional use permit, you need to make a finding that one of these six things has occurred. Misrepresentation or fraud, that the permits not being exercised, that it ceased or suspended for, has been suspended for six months. That the permit has, the conditions of the permit haven't been complied with, that it's, that there's something unsafe about the, 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 the use. Or that the, the use has been materially altered, expanded, or expanded beyond the scope of the use originally authorized. So these are the things that you should be looking for tonight as you consider this issue. Again, this is not an appeal. So I will get into, get into. What I'll do first is give you a little bit of information about the site and then talk a little bit about. I'll talk about the, give a background on the CUP process that we went through and then address the applicant's request and offer our recommendations. So this subject property outline, the subject property outlined in red, right here, is in the Grandview area, it, the, the property owner owns both this and this and, and the subject. The entire property, if you, especially if you include this upper piece, it's really bisected by both the north, the Grandview North and Grandview South neighborhood. And so there, there's approximately, in its entirety, there's, there's 5.64, there's 5.64 acres there. It lies in the A1-5 zone is, I'll show you here in a minute, the, the zoning map. Here's a, a close-up of the property. You can see the outbuildings on the property, the big red barn and a, and a few other accessory structures. The applicant's property, the applicant, the property is, lies right there. So here's the zoning of the, of the property. This, the, the subject property is in the agricultural one, A1-5 zone, so five acres agricultural zone. And mono, a monopole or a, a communications facility like the, like the facility that's been erected on that structure is certainly permitted in this zone. Here is the, the site plan that you originally approved back on June 8th, 2022. And you can see the location of the, of, of where the monopole is going to be. When you approved that, when you granted this conditional use, you did it with four, based on four conditions. One, that the appearance of the poultry should be close to the native vegetation in Utah. That natural vegetation on the, the site should be preserved as much as possible and replaced as needed. That the monopole site should be moved 150 feet to the north of the initial proposed location to satisfy the 160-foot distance required from the residential zone boundary and that final set of plans be approved by the state licensed engineer. So we, when this came to you, there was an, there was a, we, we knew that that monopole location had to move to the north to, to make sure that the, there's a, a distance requirement that says the, the pole has to be at least 160 feet from a residential zone and, and that's twice the height of the pole. The pole's 80 feet and so it has to be 160 feet away from the residential zone. And there you go. So there's the zoning map. So what happened is after you approved the conditional use permit, we passed, passed that time period. And then the, the applicant brought, the applicant of the conditional use permit, Atlas Towers, came in and they submitted, submitted a building permit and then a few other documents to finish up the conditional use permit with us. So as far as the conditional use permit, they submitted this new site plan showing the, the the site of the monopole north, roughly 150 feet. 150 feet to meet that 160-foot separation from the, the residential one zone. So they submitted a new site plan, showed us, and in your staff report, you, you have a copy of the, of kind of the architectural drawings or the kind of illustrating what the, the pine, they call it a monopine, what the monopine was going to look like. And, and so they submitted that. They submitted everything they needed to, to have us close out the conditional use permit, which in turn allowed us to grant, to, to issue a building permit. They, at the same time that they began submitting these documents for the CUP, they also were starting to submit documents for their building permit. And so they, they met all of those requirements. CUP was finished up. See, the conditional use permit application was, was finished by staff. They had submitted plans and you can, you can see on here, there's stamped by a professional engineer, that, that was one of the requirements. One of the conditions rather of the CUP granted back on June 8th. So we staff verified that all those requirements had been, had been satisfied. Then I just, around the end of December, we had a, we had this revocation, request for a consideration of a revocation of this, of, of the CUP. Let me show you, before I get into that, just show you a few pictures of, of the monopole. The, the, these were taken this morning. This is looking kind of northwest towards the monopole, monopine. Atlas Tower calls it a monopine. You can see the, the red-roofed building right there. And you can also see this structure here showed up on their site plan that you just saw just a moment ago as well. We are, oh, I don't know, probably roughly 20 to 30 feet from the, from the back wall of the, the applicant's property. We're probably about 20 to 30 feet from the applicant's property that, when this photo was taken. Here's kind of looking south, southwest, southwest, I guess I would say. And you can, again, you can see the, the red-roofed building right there. And the notice that was posted for the, for this request. This is just kind of a more of a close-up of the, of the monopine, 80 feet tall. And you can, you can see, one thing that was interesting, this is the first time I'd been on the site this morning and noticed the slenderness of this monopine. It is, is quite a, quite slender in its, in its width. You can see now looking, this is looking basically south. And you can see the monopine there. There is a billboard right there. The monop, the original location for the monopine was supposed to be roughly right there. I'll go back and show you, show you. So there's the billboard right there. And that's where the, 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 the monopine was supposed to, supposed to be. And then of course moved farther to the northwest. So that, that's, and I've showed you this. So on, towards the end of December, we received a a request from David D. Jeffs, a, an application to revoke the conditional use permit. In that conditional use permit, there were a number of things regarding number of points made by the applicant that, that certain noticing standards are not, had not been met. And that is, those issues are outside of, those would be akin or, or germane to a, an appeal process. When you, when a CUP is issued, there is a 14-day window in which somebody can appeal the issuance of a, a conditional use permit. Code also says that noticing, that if noticing isn't challenged within 30 days, the, the noticing is considered, state code says that noticing is considered to have, noticing requirements are considered to have been met if they're not challenged within 30 days. So those noticing issues that have been raised by the app, by the applicant are moot at this point. They also made some other, some other allegations. They, they stated that, they, they point to section, subsection 1434250, 11H Roman numeral two in the city code that basically says that the planning commission needs to make five findings to, to grant a, a conditional use permit. Those, the, if you look at, if you, well, I'll, I'll point out a couple of things. The, the report of action that was issued for this, that was issued for the conditional use permit, just shortly after the conditional use permit was granted, states that the planning staff stated that the Atlas Tower meets all, meets the conditions for a monopole tower outlined in Provo City Code 143425011, subsection 11, which would have covered all of the, those, that area. So staff considered whether or not those, those, whether or not the, the issues brought up in those findings had, had been met. So that, that was one of the big things that, that's, that the applicant brought up. Hey, you, the, the commission did not, did not make those findings. Well, staff made those findings and recommended approval to you. Beyond that, that, that issue is, again, not germane to this, to this application. That, 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 if, if we were to consider that, we would be, it would be like considering an appeal. The, what, we're not here to discuss whether or not there were mistakes made in the, the, in the process or proceedings of the conditional use permit. So that is not even a consideration for discussion tonight. Again, like I've, I noted earlier, the, the things that you should be considering, not, not here, whether noticing requirements have been met, not if the findings, if the required findings of the planning commission had been made. It's whether or not, again, if a use, if, if the use permit had been obtained by misrepresentation or fraud, whether or not the permit granted was not being exercised. And we clearly know that it is exercised because I showed you pictures of it from this morning. And, and obviously C doesn't apply because the use hasn't ceased. D, the conditions imposed upon said permit have not, have been complied with. And that's why we finished out the conditional use permit and issued the building permit. There have been no findings, no, no evidence submitted that suggests the monopole is a danger or detrimental to the health, safety, or general welfare of persons residing in the vicinity or injurious to the property in the vicinity. Nor has the condition, nor does it appear the conditional use, does not appear that it's been altered or expanded beyond the scope of the use. We, it was intended, you asked the applicants to move their, the pole 150 feet to the north to make sure that the, the requirements of the code had been met. And so staff believes it's clear that, that, that none of the, that there has been nothing submitted, that, that, no evidence, nothing that would demonstrate or give cause to, to make a, to make any of the findings on that slide in front of you. And so staff would recommend that you, that you deny this request.
Any questions for Mr. Larson from the commissioners?
Brandon, on the 160 feet, was it measured from their backyard?
It was measured, yes. It was measured from, well, no, actually it's not measured from their backyard because let me show you. It was measured from, there's the line right there and it falls short of their backyard. Their, their backyard is, there, there's the property and the, the, the line between the two zones is right there, about 20 feet or so.
Be more than 160.
Yeah.
From the edge of the zone, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, it's 160 feet from the edge of the zone.
I'm just curious, can I ask how tall is that billboard that you're there?
I have no clue. I think it's, I think it's less than 108, less than 80. Let's see if we can get a, any kind of. I don't know if this really, there's another picture here that I think is, that's actually across the freeway. So right there, I drove past this several times. I think it's shorter than the 80-foot pole, but I, I don't know. There was, yeah, never, never measured that, nor was it a requirement of the applicant.
Any other questions for Mr. Larson?
Yeah, I have a question. Assuming we were to grant this revocation, is there any legal requirement for the tower to be removed?
If you grant it, yeah, if the conditional use goes away, the, the, the building permit, the,
The structure would need to be removed.
Would have to be removed, yeah. That's my understanding unless the, the attorney's office wants me to correct me on, correct me on that. But yeah, if there's no conditional use permit, the, the use wouldn't be, would not be allowed to.
So it's not just that they would have to turn it off and not use it, but it would actually have to be deconstructed?
Well,
Like if it was just a non-functioning cell, like if it was just off and non-functioning, would it?
The, you know, and it's hard to say that. I mean, ultimately, I, I guess worst-case scenario, yeah, it has to be removed. But I believe there would also be opportunities for the applicant to come back and correct any errors that you found. But then again, we're starting to kind of get into the question of, are we, you know, are, are we talking about mistakes being made that are more, you know, more associated with an appeal, where we're not here to evaluate whether the, there was a mistake made with, with the review of the, of the conditional use permit or if the planning commission made a mistake. None of those things are on the table tonight.
I'm guessing that Mr. Whitlock's just asking to know what the outcome would be if, if the requests were granted anyway.
Yeah.
What it even fixes the problem that they, that they think is a problem.
Yeah, because that's an explicit argument made by the representation from Atlas Towers in their, in their letter. And I was just curious what the city's comment on that was.
Yeah, I mean, it's possible, but again, I think that there would be opportunity for them to correct any of, if, if there was found, if you find that one of these six things had been, one of these six things was an issue, they would have the, the ability to correct that before we got to the point of tearing down the pole.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any other questions, Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah, I have one. There were some attached exhibits with the applicant. Some declarations. And I noticed the applicant, David Jeffs and the person who represents Rhonda Zobel, her declaration isn't included, that grouping. Is, is there any other declarations that should be there that aren't there?
No, I, I do recall Ms. Zobel's declaration being in there.
It wasn't in, I think, Mr. Gonzalez, it wasn't in the ones we got in an email today, but it's actually in the packet.
Okay.
I could be wrong, let me look.
Maybe I missed it, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Larson.
We have the applicant here and also the, the representative of Atlas Tower is here as well, just to, to let you know, so.
As is our standard, I'm going to have Mr. Jeffs. Are you speaking for the applicant?
Well, I am as well as Mrs. O'Bell. She's going to speak as to some of the photographs that I don't know as well as she does.
Okay. We'll have you give us your presentation and then Ms. Zobel and then we'll go from there.
Okay. Do I just click the button to move forward? Okay. So let me maybe address initially the issue relative to the notice because I, I disagree with Mr. Larson relative to his position that the notice is that there is no basis to challenge the lack of notice. If you look at the Utah code provisions, and I didn't realize this was something that I was going to need to address until, so it's not in my, the, the actual presentation. But there's a code section, section 10-9A-205 that requires the, the city to give notice to any adjoining property owner, each adjoining property owner within the parameters that are specified by the city. Now that, there was something, as you'll notice in the, the presentation we made, we, we actually included some information relative to the property owners that were within 1,000 feet. That was done on the basis of some of the, the representations that were made in the minutes of, that were in the minutes of the previous meeting. Subsequently, I had some conversation with, with Ms. Ditto relative to that as well as some others. And it appears that it's actually a 500-foot distance that would be applicable. And so we submitted as an additional submit, some information relative to the property owners that are within the 500 area. And there aren't a lot of differences between the ones that are in the 500 versus the ones that were actually supposedly sent notice based on what the city said. But the reality of it is, and I think that's what was in the packet that you saw, is that there were two significant people that were not given notice and they've submitted their declarations that they did not receive notice. That was Mrs. O'Bell as well as the Terries who live next door to them. And, and that's significant because there's another provision of the Utah code. And this is the part that I would disagree with Mr. Larson in terms of his interpretation. And this is the part that I would disagree with Mr. Larson in terms of his interpretation. Because there is a provision of the Utah Code that addresses what happens if there isn't notice. It's framed in sort of a backwards way in some ways because what it says is, it talks about, there's a provision that talks about your ability to challenge what's happened at a planning commission meeting. And then it gives this, this language that's included. This is in section, uh, because it's 10, oh, now I can't see the number, oh, 10-9A-801, sub-paragraph four. And it says, and, and if you'll, I think that the attorney that's representing Atlas Tower references this slightly differently than I do. So let me give you, let me give you the actual wording. It says, "The provisions of subsection two, which is the one relative to notice, "to, uh, apply from the date on which the municipality takes final action on a land use application." So that would be when the, the conditional use permit was granted, but based on the hearing that occurred here. This is the important language. It says, "If the municipality conformed with the notice provisions of part two notice "or for any person who had actual notice of the pending land use decision." So that language that applies that 30-day requirement is conditioned on the fact that an individual actually gets the notice that the statute says that they're supposed to get. And this makes logical sense. You can't expect somebody who is given no notice to have the obligation to then respond within a particular period of time of when they, when the action occurred. Because if they don't get notice, they can't give, they can't give the, they can't give the appropriate opportunity to respond. And that's what happened in this particular case. There were two individuals, the two most notable individuals that didn't get notice. I, I didn't, they got submitted later on and I assume, I assume from what Mr. Larson said that they would be sent out to you. But there's an additional packet and there's an additional indication of other individuals that were not given notice. So since,
We received that today.
Uh, good, thank you. So if they didn't get notice, then that would be, then, then this provision that forecloses the ability to address the conditional use permit doesn't apply to those individuals that weren't given notice. And that makes sense. How can you have some action binding on an individual who doesn't have notice and who was entitled based on state statute to notice because they were, they're within the parameters that the city sets? In this particular case, they're really close to it because theirs is the property that's right next to them. Let me, is that supposed to move it forward? Sorry, I'm not real familiar with your system here, so, okay. So here's the same map that you, that you saw before. And this is actually, this is interesting because this is actually the map that was presented to Mrs. Zobel and the Terries, um, by a representative of Atlas Tower. The person came from Atlas Tower. They were trying to put together a neighborhood meeting. There's a question about whether the neighborhood meeting was properly noticed, but I don't think that's as relevant to what we're talking about today. And at the time that they presented this, this particular map to the Terries and to Ms. Zobel, they were informed that the tower would be located in the vicinity where the billboards are that you've been shown. But more significantly, and this goes to something that was raised by Mr. Larson and, or the staff rather, in their staff report. And that is, is whether there was a misrepresentation. Again, I wasn't, didn't realize the city was going to take that kind of position. But there was a misrepresentation that was made because Ms. Wulner at that point in time said, yeah, not only is the, the tower going to be located in the vicinity where the billboards are, but it will only be a couple feet taller than the billboards. So on that basis, they're saying, well, that's, you know, it's down in the vicinity where the billboards are and it's a couple feet taller. That's not true. If you, when you see the pictures, it's probably 40 feet taller. So there was in fact a misrepresentation. I don't think it was a misrepresentation that that's where the billboard, or excuse me, that's where the pole was going to be located. Because she didn't know at that point in time that that's where the pole was going to be located. Or she thought that's where it was going to be located. It wasn't until later on that the staff from the city then determined that, no, it can't be in that location because at its height of 80 feet, it's too close to the residential boundary. So that wasn't a misrepresentation, but there was a misrepresentation as to the height of the tower. Because at that point in time, she said it was going to be a couple feet taller than, than the billboards. That's quite different. So tell me how I'm supposed to do this so I do it right. Do I just aim it there and? Okay, there you go. This, uh, this is kind of, this is not really overly relevant, but this is the notice that went out from the city. I got this based on a grammar request. You can see that the, the, the diagram or the, the picture that's attached to this notice that went out, that's the notice that went out. That notice includes the provision that says that the tower was going to be located down where the billboards were. Okay, let's, I'm, I'm just not doing it right. You want to just, I'll just tell you. Okay, you, this, I'm sorry, my technological skills in terms of putting a presentation together are not great. But this is an email that actually came from the representative from Provo City who's notifying the Carrie Mulner, the individual that is working with Atlas Tower about the fact that there, the tower can't be where it was. This went out on, I think, June 1st, as I remember. And she was notified and if you can, I'm sorry if you can't read that, it probably didn't come through at all well. But if you read, and I think it was actually attached to the application that I did as well. But if you read that, what it says is, "You are going to have to submit a new site location before we can move forward with your plans." So that's, that's what she's telling them to do. They didn't, they didn't submit a site plan before they went ahead. They came into the, the planning commission and just made the suggestion that they would move the plant, the, move the tower north by 150 feet. So you want to click me forward again? Thank you. I don't know why I can't do it. This is the section that I think, that this is what is, is really particularly relevant in terms of my view, in terms of what has to happen. This is a provision of the ordinance that addresses conditional use permits, particularly with respect to communications equipment and monopoles like this one is. And this imposes the obligation, if you read that section, it imposes the obligation on the planning commission, it says, "Shall make the following findings "for any cellular facility subject to a conditional use permit." So this tower, you, this planning commission would have to have made these, all of these findings. Now, I don't know what the, I don't know the answer to, uh, item number B that's in there because that's a technical requirement. But the, the, the applicant, Atlas Tower, would have had to present factual information sufficient for this group to then be able to make that determination that this co-location wasn't going to significantly impact on, on antenna transmission or reception. And then if you go down to the last one, the, no, not, sorry, go back. Then, then you go down to the next one, item number E, it says that, that the location of the cellular facility will not interfere with existing transmission. I don't know whether those facts were presented to this group or not. I don't have the technical skill to know. But what I do know is, is that the other three items that are on there were not established. It has, it says that the proposed structure is compatible with the height and mass of existing buildings and utility structures. That's a pretty specific requirement. Then you kick down to the next one, C, that says that the antenna location blends with existing vegetation, topography, and buildings. Again, that's a very specific requirement. And then number D is, or letter D is, that the location approval of monopoles will not create a detrimental impact to the adjoining properties. Those are the specific factual findings that this body had to make in order to approve that particular tower. Now, if you'll click two more down for me, this, this is the actual ruling or the actual findings that this commission made. You can read it closer in the, not necessarily in this presentation, but if you look at the, the, the items that are attached to the application, there isn't any evidence that those findings were made. The specific findings that are required. The only thing that can be said is there's this generalized requirement that says it satisfies all the requirements. I've listened to the, um, I haven't listened, but I've read the transcript of the commission. I don't see any evidence in terms of what was discussed that this particular body actually addressed any of those particular items. The only thing that I saw in, in the, the rest, in the, the, the actual transcript, transcription of what was said here is there was a discussion about the need to make this look like some natural, natural tree as opposed to something else. But it certainly doesn't satisfy the more significant requirements, which are that it has to be consistent with the existing height and mass of the other structures and that it is consistent with the existing vegetation, topography. Doesn't satisfy those. I'm just, if you want to just jump ahead another couple, I'll just show you a cut. So here's a picture from the Zobel's home as the tower is being built. You can see how tall it is. The next one shows, this is the tree from ground level. This is similar to what Mr. Larson was showing. Now let's get another one, if you'll just click over. This is now, now you can get a little bit better flavor. I don't see any way in which you can say that that monopole has any sort of similarity to, or that it's consistent with the existing height and mass of the surrounding features. It's substantially taller than the, the red roof building that's there on the side. It's substantially taller than any of the other structures that are down there. And as you can see from the pictures from the house that they have, their house sits up on a hill quite a bit above. It's tall enough that it impacts on their view from their property when you see it from that locate, from the house itself. I think there's maybe one or two more in, in this presentation. Is that it? Okay. So, it, it, just so you know, this is a sort of an aside. When you try and put together one of these presentations and you want to have slides that are, some of them are in portrait and some are in landscape, you can't do them in the same slide presentation. You have to do them in separate. So I had to create another slide presentation. Let me, let me click to one, I think one more. So this is another picture, no, back up one please, sorry. There you go. That's that same picture, but you can get a little bit closer view about where they're at. And it, and it's a little hard to see, but as you look at it, you can see that actually the tree is substantially taller than the, the billboard that was down there. That billboard that's to the right of the tree as you're looking at it, that's the billboard that was, that it was supposedly only going to be a couple of feet taller than, well, it certainly isn't. It's way, it's way taller than that. I think at that point in time, I think I'm going to turn the time. The rest of these are pictures from Mrs. Zobel's home and she's better equipped to describe what, what you're looking at and you can see. But, but these pictures, so, so I don't think that there's any evidence that this monopole satisfies the requirement of being consistent with the existing mass and height of the surrounding structures. It isn't consistent with the topography and the vegetation. I mean, even as in their attempt to try and make it be a monopine, there aren't any other pines around there. There are all other kinds of trees. It doesn't even fit that criteria. And it certainly has substantial impact on the quality and the, and the, the, has a detrimental impact on her property. I'll let her take a few minutes and walk through the, the other slides. Uh, do you want, do you have any questions for me at this stage, or do you want me to wait till after?
Yeah, I, I, uh, I, one or two. On the list that, on the supplemental list that you gave with the, the list of addresses, I noticed there were Mrs. Zobel's name was listed three different times with three different addresses.
Should be just two. She owns the house that's there and she owns the piece of property just to the, the north of that piece.
Is it, is it her position that none of the addresses received?
There might be a duplicate address on there and, and, and I think that Mr. Greenwood tried to take out some of the duplications.
1441 and 1425?
Yeah, there, there's a piece of property, it's a vacant piece of property that's just north of the house.
Neither of the properties received notice? Is that the, what she's claiming?
Well, the notice would have been to her, so it wouldn't go to the property address. It would have, it would have gone to her, but she never got any notice.
Where does she, where does she reside?
That house. She, she didn't get any notice by, from the city on, at any location, at any address, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll turn the,
Any other questions for the applicant before Mr. Jeff sets down?
Is he, will he be coming back?
I can come back. I just didn't know if you had any now, I would try and answer. If not, I'll let Mrs. Zobel talk.
Yeah, let's finish and then I, I would have some questions.
Yes, please. I bring my support system, I'm sorry.
We're the other neighbor, we're the blue house. She's the, the tan house.
My name is Rhoda Zobel and this is Merrily Terry. She lives next door to us and her husband is Richard Terry. They live at 1425 North, 2100 West. My husband and I, Richard Zobel, live at 1444, 1441 North, 2100 West, and I own the lot next to us at 1454 North, 2100 West. Maybe that clears the things up. But with the notification that we got for this meeting, Merrily Terry got my name on her notification at 1425 North. I got Merrily and Rich's notification at my home at 1441 North. I don't know how those things happen, but they happen. But we did get a notification to this meeting saying we receive no other notifications. I want to thank David for pointing out some legal facts to you folks. Because it shows that I was very frustrated and very concerned about what's been going on. I'd like to share the facts that our property, that we're property owners. And we bought our property as a vacant lot, or we bought the lot. It wasn't vacant, we knocked down the home to be there, a home to be on that lot because of the view. It was a beautiful view and we're at the elevation that you can look down into the valley, both to the west, to the northwest, and to the south, and it's an unobstructed view. We built a handicap accessible home for a grown child with special needs. He used to take pictures of beautiful sunsets before he was involved in a head-on automobile accident. But now, he, now he is, was confined to a wheelchair and enjoyed the beautiful sunsets. Our home, as you can see, have lots of windows, lots of doors looking to the west so that we could take care of him there, there. We also felt like that an unobstructible view would add value to our homes or our home. The location of the 5G tower does, does not resemble anything but a pine tree sticking right up out of the ground. They say it's 80 feet tall, 80 feet tall, but we found out by having, um, a survey done and he filed a flight plan and went over it and determined it may be 88 feet tall because of the antennas that were put on. But with the question, does the antennas add height to the pole? Well, obviously it does for us, but is it to pole measurement they were taking, or are they taking the finished, uh, height with the antennas on it, which is 88 feet? The surveyor's name was Mark Greenwood. After receiving a letter on April the 28th, Mrs. Wulner, the employee of Atlas Tower, come to our home because we asked her to come to our home and she graciously did do that because my husband and I, the Terries, were concerned where the pole was going to be and the health effects from the pole. My husband has a severe heart condition and we wanted to know, is the pole, the 5G going to bother his heart condition?
Defibrillator and a pacemaker.
Yep, he has a defibrillator and a pacemaker. Well, anyhow, she brought with her the plat, map where the pole was going to be and it was close to the sign, the billboard sign. And the billboard sign, by the way, is on, uh, our south border, property border and on Terry's north property border. So we really don't, when the billboard sign was there when we bought the property, we knew it was there, but we still have the beautiful view. So she assured us that that pine tree right there was going to be located there. We, the Terries and us, when we were talking with her, had decided that that would probably be a good place if you were going to put a pole, put it by the billboard. It wouldn't block anybody's view, but make sure that the neighbors have a voice in it. We didn't want, want to say, yes, you could do it and not have any of the neighbors without coming and talking about where it was going to be. She guaranteed us several times that there would be no blockage on our decks, no blockage from any of our west windows that we have in our home. And we took her word and the next day she said she was going to go to a Provo City meeting with the topic being in that meeting, the North Grandview neighborhood. We live in the South Grandview neighborhood. That tree stands in the South Grandview neighborhood.
But we didn't get any notice.
And we never received notice. We're in the South Grandview neighborhood. Again, the tree is in the South Grandview neighborhood, not the North Grandview neighborhood. And after reading the transcripts, that, was that this June 8th meeting that we were never at and did not know? I am just frustrated to the core about this. Speaking from the transcript records of June 8th, 2022, a chairperson asked if notifications had been met. The answer from someone, The answer from someone, because they did not have who was speaking, said, yes, they had been met. The applicant did within five hundred feet. And then someone else spoke up and said it was within one thousand feet. And someone, one of you people said, good, great, wonderful. How many homes are involved within that thousand feet? The answer was seventy-eight. You can go to your transcripts. I can give you the numbers to go to where that was said. Okay, and when one of the neighborhoods, let's see, seventy-eight, and when no one from the neighborhood was present to present or speak on behalf of the neighborhood, a chairperson stated this. Just as a matter of discussion, maybe that seventy-eight people being invited to a meeting and more, and, and none of them coming sends a kind of a message to me that seventy-eight people didn't care. My remarks back to you is that seventy-eight people didn't care, but rather because seventy-eight notices were simply not sent. People in the Grandview neighborhoods do care about the neighborhood. They do care about their neighbors. And if seventy-eight notices were sent, I guarantee you, you would have had people at this meeting. People in the Grandview neighborhood, like I said, do care about it. Neighborhood meetings are not, this neighborhood meeting was not published. I went online to your neighborhood calendar. It was not on that calendar. There was no, no publication of that meeting. I am now hearing that a courtesy notices need, only need to be sent.
Courtesy, it's, it's a courtesy that they send notice that they don't have to send.
So I ask, where is it written? And when was it written? What is a courtesy notice? What are the policies about notification? I ask you that question. Who is responsible for sending out notifications? I ask you that question. I know you won't be able mostly to find these things that they're hearing right now, but I would like you to return. You've got my address. The answers to those questions because notifications are important. I don't believe citizens in Provo need to go to every public hearing to find out if something is going on in their neighborhood. It, I think it's the obligation when somebody from Provo City or somebody comes into Provo City and they're within, in their rights to file something happening in the neighborhood. Neighbors need to be contacted. Neighbors need to know. Okay. And after the, after reading about that meeting, Sue Swager said in her, she was at this meeting, she said she was never contacted about a neighborhood meeting and she was never contacted about the June eighth meeting. She found out about that on an accident. She come to this meeting and no one was there. She was frustrated because there was no notification sent out. She again confirmed that. No, okay. Provo City and Atlas Tower has proven to have real communication problems. Real communication problems. We never received notices and okay. Not having been notified by the planning commission meeting, we still are under the belief that the five G tower was to be built where it was planned, where we were told it was going to be, where we were told where it was and the plan was submitted, I guess, in the June eighth meeting. It was the same plan we had received from Atlas Tower. But I guess on June first, which certainly give Atlas Tower plenty of time to resubmit a plan to Provo City, we submit notifications to a neighborhood meeting, both in the north and the south neighborhood of where they were going to place that tree. That was not done. The only notification we ever got is when, on November the twelfth, when I seen them cutting down some trees and working on an access road. You may have posted a notice on that particular piece of property, but the access road coming down-
There's no access to the access road.
Coming down Independence Avenue is locked. It has a gate. It's locked. You can't get on that dirt road. The other road was owned by Jorgensen's. That access road going down a personal, has a gate on it and it is locked. So for someone to take and go down to a property as low as that is, or inconvenient as that is, that notification served no use. Okay. I, I'm on a roll here, you guys. I'm so sorry. I don't speak well, but I think at June first. Okay, all right, David Stone. I think on June first, we should have been contacted. I think the Terrys and the Zobels should have been contacted. The neighbors should have been contacted and we should have been able to have a say on where that pole was going to be. I want to show you where the pole is and ask me if it's not affecting my property. Can I push this button now and do it? Okay, could you do that? Okay, that's, that is the billboard sign and that's the tree and it should have been built over by the billboard sign. And we were told it was only going to be a couple of feet higher than the sign and no higher than the tree. Please move on. This here is going, uh,
On the other side.
On the north, going north into Salt Lake, showing the billboard sign relative to the property lines and our house. Go ahead. This again is, our home is up there and we're looking down. We have a beaut, had a beautiful view. But the tree is there. Go ahead. And keep going. This is our home. This is our home. This is our beautiful, beautiful home and our swimming pool area and our sports court area. We take pride in our home. Go ahead. This is a picture taken from my sports court. This is the tree. This is also a picture taken from our swimming pool area. This is the tree. Go ahead. This right here is a picture taken on my front porch as I drive in my driveway, looking through my kitchen window and looking out my French doors to the deck area. This is a picture from my kitchen, looking out to the deck area to the tree. Go ahead. A picture from our foyer. When you walk in our foyer, this is looking into our living area with a picture of the tree. This is a picture of the tree from my upper deck. Go ahead. This is a picture from our master bedroom. Looking out the window, our beautiful view in the evening is a tree. And we have a floor that, this is a picture of our upper balcony, the picture of the tree.
Upstairs.
Upstairs. We have a three-story home. You could go ahead and move it. Okay. And also just a comment right here. I am disappointed that Provo City and at, uh, Provo City and Atlas Tower lied and misrepresented theirselves to us with false misleading statements with regards to switching the site of the location of the five G tower. Okay, well, we need, I just need to do the closing. Okay. We claim that we were led to be, we were led and missed. We claim that we were lied to and misrepresented on both by Provo City and Atlas Tower and who is the company responsible for the tower? I was just going to say one more thing. I ask you, I've asked you to watch that power presentation that we have made. And I believe we have been the victims of a fraudulent and deceptive acts from the city and also Atlas Tower. We should not have, we should have been contacted about the change of the tower and the location of the tower. We have no financial gain in the tower. The owners of the property that are being paid have a lease payment and rightfully so. Atlas Tower has been built and paid for building the tower. And the companies using the towers are making millions of dollars. But we are the only ones who are really paying the price for all the deceptive acts and the lies that we have incurred. I ask that you overturn the conditional use permit of the five G tower and relocate it out of the site, out of our site, out of our main site. The owners of the property have acres of ground. If they want to keep that tower on the acres of ground, have them move it so it's not obstructing our views, so that when I drive in my driveway, the first thing I see is not that tree. Thank you.
Commissioners, any question for Mrs. O'Bell versus Terry?
Yeah, I, I want to know if you have a proposed relocation site. Have you identified one?
We haven't, we haven't specifically, but the, I think as she mentioned, the property where this is, if, if the, if the, if the tower were moved further north, an additional, I don't know how much more distance it is, but then it wouldn't be in, in line of sight of hers. The property-
Wouldn't it be in line of sight of the Ross Kellys or the Hossaras?
I, I don't know where they are in, in relation, but the piece of property that she owns that's just north of hers is a vacant property. And if, even if it were located so that it was impacting on the view from that property, that's a vacant property that doesn't have, she acquired it to, to preserve the ownership next to her and there's nothing built on that property. So moving further north would move the, would move the pole out of her, her sign, line of sight. It would move it into potentially the line of sight of the vacant property that she has to the north and wouldn't impact on anything that she would be uncomfortable with.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Um, I just, to summarize, kind of like, simplify all the arguments made. I just want to make sure I'm following the key arguments you're making. One, you're arguing that no notices were given or-
No notice was given so that she's not bound by this action.
For the original meeting, and then there's just a difference of opinion on how to read the requirements and whether or not that's germane to this case before us, basically.
Is that on the notice issue also?
Yeah, yeah, right. So the city's interpreting that's not germane, but you're arguing that's germane.
Right.
Two, that the planning commission did not verify findings. And that the reality shows that those findings don't match the conditional use standards.
Correct.
And then three, that the use permit was obtained by misrepresentation. Is that basically essentially the crux of your arguments?
Yes, that is.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Okay, thank you. All right, I would just like to, um, restate that the planning commission does not have the purview to, um, hear an appeal. Is that my correct understanding, Ms. Diddo?
Yes, that is correct.
So the question, I have great sympathy for if in fact there was no noticing or, um, these other things that are unfortunate. I have great sympathy for that, but there is absolutely nothing we have the power to do about that. So I would like to hear from the neighborhood and from public, but I would like to ask you to keep your comments relevant to the things we do have the right to hear tonight, which is, um, these findings for revocation that are on the screen. If you feel that you can help us to determine that we have the right to revoke it, then, um, is, is that okay for me to limit that, or am I not allowed to limit public comment?
Yes, I mean, as far as, um, limiting it to relevancy.
Okay, yeah, I, I just feel like we already have great sympathy for this argument of the lack of notice, but we have no control over that and that would have to be handled through another avenue, I believe. Can someone, Ms. Diddo, can you-
How in the world could we have done the proof to the peel if we did not know about it?
I'm asking-
That's why I'm saying, is there, if there's no notice, how did we-
I agree with you.
In that thirty-
I agree. We just don't have the power to do that. So I'm asking the legal counsel here at my right.
Through the appellate process and-
You just said we're not, we're not able to appeal.
So these report of actions are public information. And so as soon as they're published, if they're, um, actions that affect you, you, you were aware that, um, Atlas Tower was building a tower, right?
And then we went exactly with what she told us. That was the notice that we were given was incorrect. It was deceitful.
I, I understand. I'm talking about the legal process, right? And so not the content, simply the legal process. So the-
But should we have appealed it then, after we've been told that she's going to, that where they're going to build the tower? Should we have appealed that, not trusting what she was saying?
The process is after the report of action has been issued, the decision has been made by the planning commission. That is when you would appeal if you disagree with that decision.
And where do you find, where did you find, where did you post that? Where was that posted? Where was that public information found at?
Brandon, when, where is this published once it's, the report of action is issued?
Report of action is, now, did we post those online?
Nope.
So it's posted on Provo City webpage, ProvoCity.org or for the commission's webpage. It's also posted on the Utah, um, state public notice website as well.
That means that an owner of a property should go every day and check to see if that something's going to be affected after you've got somebody from the actual representation of the company stating one thing. Is that, is that really an expectation?
Just, just as far as, because we have so many issues to deal with today.
Okay, yeah, I'm just curious, because that's, that's where our, that's where our biggest complaint is.
Most understanding. I'm just trying to make sure we're focusing on the issues that are most relevant, so, which is legal procedure. So when they're published, they're required to be public. Specifically in this instance, um, you were given notice that there was a tower going up.
Absolutely.
And then when this meeting happened, the planning commission had some concerns because of the setback requirements. Therefore, that position was changed. So I'm, I'm not talking about whether it was the right decision. I'm not talking about the content. I'm just talking about legal procedure of what happened. At that point, like you're on notice that it's going to, there, that the tower's going to be built, that kind of thing. If you wanted to know whether there would be changes, you are checking the website and whether that would happen. So anytime there's a planning commission, sure, you would be checking that. At that point, you would file an appeal.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a neighborhood or district chair to rep, to speak to this from the Grandview North or Grandview South neighborhoods? Okay.
So it has to be a chair?
Um, a neighborhood chair or a vice chair that's been appointed to represent the neighborhood. But otherwise, everyone will be given an opportunity to speak that would like to speak. Okay, each member of the public that would like to speak, we will give you two minutes. Miss Na, Miss Na is going to put the, uh, the timer up, so you will see how much time you have. And once again, the more you can give us, that helps us to make our decision that is within our purview, which is the revocation standards, then that will help us to help you tonight. Anything beyond that is not in the planning commission's purview and you will have to take that up with the city attorney or whatever the appeal process is, whether you agree with it or not. That's the avenue, is my understanding that you have to go, because we don't have the power to do that. So we would love to hear your concerns. We would love to hear your input. We have great compassion and we appreciate the input that you've already given us in written form. And so if you would like to come to the podium, state your name and, um, you have two minutes.
Yes, I'm Richard Zobel, Rhoda's husband. There is two options for moving that pole. As was stated, we own the vacant lot to the north of our house. We haven't built on it yet, but it could be moved seventy-five, eighty feet to the north and it wouldn't obstruct our view at all. Had we have had that option and knew about what was going on, we would have told, we would have give that to them rather than let them go ahead and put it where they want. And then the gentleman owns, that owns the property where the mega pole tree is now. You know, and I don't know and I don't care, but apparently he's being paid monthly to have the pole on his property. It's interesting to me that he put it right where it is, so it would be in, in our view, because he's got probably close to ten acres that goes north and it's pasture ground. It could be moved north there. And that would be out of our hair, further west from the subdivisions. And it shouldn't bother him at all because he just has a horse pasture and some old sheds there. That would be the second option. And to me, that would be the best one because he does get paid to have that pole on his property. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else like to speak from the neighborhood?
My name's Karen. I live in Grandview and I love Grandview and
Karen, what's your last name?
Karen Salmon. Uh, I might be familiar to you, because I spoke last time about the dangers of five G that the tower emits. But I feel like that's kind of irrelevant right now. I feel like the Zobels have a bigger issue that needs to be dealt with. They likely overpaid for the property because they valued the stunning view of the lake and mountains, and they knew that no future construction could take that away. They did us all a favor and tore down a dilapidated house and rebuilt a lovely home that beautifies our community. This increased our property values and also increased the taxes that the city collects from that property. Clearly, it was an investment primarily for the view, but benefits us all. Provo allowed an unsightly tower right in front of their living room, kitchen, bedrooms and backyard. Wherever they go in the house, there it is, looming large as if it's on their property. The value of their investment has been stolen. The tower placement, place where it is, that was approved, the height exceeds eighty feet. The design quite obviously does not blend with the surrounding vegetation, which you as a committee told them to do. There was no legal notification. And these things were, the changes were done behind the scenes and people were not notified of that. I was just looking over some of the transcript from before, and they actually said that looking at it from the freeway, it will look big, but from the neighborhood, I don't think it will, the sightlines will be an issue. Clearly, that was not true. That's not the case. I feel like the Zobels were very cooperative in allowing, not objecting to a tower or tree. And they were misled in order to get their approval. And you can revoke it. You can take the power and go back to the city and say Atlas Tower did not comply with our requests, and so some changes need to be made. So that's what I'm requesting that you do.
If I can ask a question, did you submit a declaration saying that you didn't receive notice?
Uh, I'm saying it right now.
Okay.
But I didn't submit an official one.
Alright.
But I don't know anybody who did in my neighborhood.
How did you know about the meeting?
Um, Facebook. This, this particular meeting?
No, the one last time in June.
A friend reposted it on Facebook, and I rarely go on Facebook.
Thank you.
Because I don't like to use my five G phone.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cameron Wonga. I'm Grandview North. I am on Facebook regularly, and I didn't see anything till today that it was looking at revocation. I'm here with two of my children who will be affected by five G, and their school is very close to this tower as well. I would like clarification on letter E. Is it saying that the health and safety is not a consideration, but the market value is?
No, it's the other way around. If you can show that it's detrimental to health, safety or general welfare, then that's, that's conditions for revocation, but not for market value.
So here are my thoughts. So Grandview is kind of a little golden treasure, where it's very close commuting and everything like that. It's, it's very good. But we have had, you know, we've already, we're close enough to the freeway. We're getting all the health hazards from that. There's been an increase of air traffic over the neighborhood, and now we're getting a five G tower, and I am concerned about the health and safety of my children. I really am. So that's
Thank you.
But I did not receive any notice, so I don't know what this declaration of notice is that you were asking her about.
Um, I think the attorney Jeff submitted around nine, ten declarations from neighbors.
I, I don't understand.
They were just sworn declarations saying they didn't receive notices.
Okay, and how can I get, do one of those?
You have verbally told us that you didn't get noticed. Thank you.
Okay.
But just so I'm clear, we've kind of already decided that's not relevant to what we're talking about right now, right? Like, we're trying to not
Why is that not relevant? Because if we're talking about it changing or misrepresentation, we never got any representation.
I'm not saying it's not relevant to you and, and your position here. I'm saying to this commission and what we have power to basically rule on, essentially, we don't have power to address that. That issue would be brought up in an appeals process, not before the planning commission. So that's what we, the conversation we had just previously. We're primarily focused on the two primary cases, which are, was it misrepresented? And/or does it violate any of these A through F?
Okay, and I say E, and I say not declaring is a misrepresentation. Would you say?
Thank you.
Anyway.
Awesome. Thank you.
My name's Jay Springer. I would ask the timer not be counted for both me and the property owner. I represent Atlas Towers. Uh, and I, I think it would be appropriate for us to have an opportunity to respond without being on the timer, if that's okay.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Um, so there are a couple of things that I would like to raise. While I, I agree generally with, uh, with Mr. Larson's assessment that the real issue here is revocation and that any issues of the issuance of the permit are not properly considered. I agree with that. That said, there are a few things that have been raised with the notices that I, I think are worth mentioning. One is that Ms. Zobel and Ms. Terry did have actual notice. And under Utah Code ten nine A eight oh one, which Attorney Jeff's mentioned, it does not apply to anyone who has actual notice of the pending land use decision, and they did, clearly. It doesn't have to be of a specific beating. It just has to be of the application and what the decision could be or what it is about. So to the extent that that is something that the, the commission might consider, I, I think that is barred by Utah law. So actual notice defeats any deficiency in mailings or any other issues. Additionally, uh, it's our understanding that the city has said that they sent out the notices. Uh, and the, the notice requirement is satisfied upon sending, not upon receipt. Because if anybody can just say, well, I, I didn't know about it, um, that doesn't that, that just defeats the purpose of, of sending out notice. We trust, we trust the postal service. We say when we send it out, it's generally good enough. So to the, to the extent that that's relevant as well, um, I think that's true. Uh, and then the, the last point that I want to mention is, you know, on, on this list in front of us, we have, we have six factors. B, C and D, or B and C are clearly not relevant, because we're talking, because it's there, it's being used. D, uh, I haven't heard anything so far to suggest that the, the conditions imposed have not been complied with. Uh, in fact, one of those conditions was to move it a hundred and fifty feet north, which was, which happened in a public meeting, which was properly noticed on the public notice website. And for any interested people, you can sign up, so you get an email every time there's a posting by a body that you're interested in. You don't have to go and check the website every time. You can get notified. And additionally, on the misrepresentational fraud, the information that was provided to the residents was the best that was available at the time. And, uh, there's no requirement that a, an updated site plan be submitted prior to the planning commission hearing. The planning commission has to receive recommendations from agencies and staff before the hearing. That's it. That's, that's in Provo City code. Furthermore, there was no misrepresentation or fraud in any way, or even an allegation of the same on this body, which is the approving body. While, while we have sympathy for people who misunderstood the process or, or didn't understand everything that was going on, that's, that's really not relevant, and that's not a misrepresentation or fraud in, in the manner that it's intended here. So, uh, we, we have also the, the property owner and a representative from Atlas. As I mentioned, I'm, I'm the attorney representing them, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you. I apologize for not inviting you to come. I knew you were here and I completely forgot. So thank you for your patience.
Completely fine.
Do we have any questions for Atlas Tower?
They said that they thought that maybe the pole was actually eighty-eight feet tall. Can you assure us that it is just eighty feet tall?
Mike? I did not, I did not have the technical specifications on that.
He was the civil engineer for the, the applicant, Greenwood Engineering.
Good evening, commissioners. Uh, thank you. My name is Michael Powers. I represent, uh, Atlas Tower One LLC, which is the developer and owner of this particular telecommunications site. Specifically, I think the question on the table is whether or not the tower is the, the eighty feet or eighty-eight feet. I can assure you that that tower was, uh, built as specified. And I know that because it's a very strict process that, that integrates into the entire flow of the development of one of these sites. When we build a site, we have to file both FCC and FAA statements as to the maximum height of the tower. There are multiple studies that are contingent on that work that's, or that information that's submitted to those federal regulations. We also are required, once the site is built, to confer back to the FAA's no hazard to air navigation study and approval, which we have in our files, to confirm that the height was built to the correct height, and we use engineers and surveyors to make that certification online through the TCNS.
Does that include an antenna at the top, or is, are antennas not included in the measurement as they, as they suggested?
Two points. Antennas would be included, so couldn't, the antennas cannot be more than eighty feet either, and there are no antennas on this tower at this time.
Did Mr. Greenwood, maybe this is a question for Mr. Jeff, but did Mr. Greenwood submit any, any stamped drawings of a survey indicating it was eighty-eight feet? Like, did he put his seal on it? I mean, is there any, is there any sworn declaration, any affidavits from him?
Lisa? Oh yeah, we need you to come to the microphone. We can share.
I'll try again.
Yeah, the, the question was if Mr. Greenwood sent any sworn declaration, affidavit, uh, or stamped engineering drawing showing that he surveyed it, it was surveyed at eighty-eight feet.
No, but we, and we, we don't dispute that the, the tower is, is a hundred and sixty feet away from the property line. That's not the issue. We haven't raised that issue. It's, it's within that timeframe. I don't know that we asked him the question for a formal certification as to the height, but he thought that it was probably generally about eighty feet.
But I think the reason why this is relevant is because essentially one of your primary arguments is for A here, that it's by misrepresentation, and then the two points under misrepresentation is that it was represented to be eighty feet, and then there's an argument that's eighty-eight feet, or is that not part of the argument?
No, that is not correct.
Okay, so what are the points of misrepresentation?
Was made by Ms. Wilner was that the, that it would be located where the billboard was, and that it would only be a couple feet taller than the billboard. That was the misrepresentation.
Okay, and then, and then the other misrepresentation is that it does not represent, or does not resemble or look to fit in with the other vegetation? Is that what the other?
That's not really a misrepresentation. That what we're, what I'm suggesting by that is, is the planning commission was obligated to follow the
Yeah, so that falls under your other argument. Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, any more questions for Atlas Tower or their representatives? Did you have something else that was an answer? Go ahead.
May I, may I comment quickly?
Yes.
I just want to touch base on, uh, two points that seem to be the most salient of these six and, and, well, misrepresentation. Uh, Atlas Tower has been developing sites throughout Utah in this area from Woods Cross to Provo for quite a long time. We take great pride in our integrity and our reach out to communities and following all of the processes and requests from staff, working diligently with staff and, and other representatives of the government as we go through these processes. And I want to stay on the record, record that this site was no different. We represented factually without fraud or misrepresentation. I think it's quite disingenuous to accuse Ms. Wilner, who was essentially having an off the, off the record conversation with a neighbor prior to a hearing about the site, where she told that person only true things, things that were true at that time. Seems like they're trying to say that Ms. Wilner should have known that that, that the, the local government would require at the hearing that the site be moved in order to meet the setbacks. That's simply not true. So I, I really encourage you not to be misled by that representation. Also, I just wanted to point out, because I could hear some confusion about E. I just want to point out that the entirety of E is really not relevant to any of the arguments that have been raised here tonight, because where we determine what, what it means to be detrimental to the health, safety and what general welfare of persons residing in the area, and we exclude both market value uh, of real estate, and we exclude by Utah law, uh, that you have no right of views, uh, being obstructed by uh, development on, on, on an adjacent or nearby parcel. I want to also exclude any arguments related to health concerns based on propagation of radio waves. Uh, I believe that this council is represented by attorney here, and I, I assume they will agree that that area of law, that body of regulation is totally, um, precluded by the, the, by the FCCs. Sorry, I'm missing a word in my head, but they, they, the FCC, the Federal Communications Commission completely controls the manufacturer, the health, the health issues as it relates to the manufacturer, the installation and the operation of radio frequencies. And so if there are folks in this room that are concerned about those, this is not the body that would consider those arguments. It would rightly be, uh, those complaints would be rightly lodged with the FCC. I'm basically saying that the RF arguments and the concerns about five G are totally irrelevant, should not be part of this this, this hearing.
Thank you.
So with that, uh, I am available to answer more specific questions about this tower, but we are represented by a local council who's licensed in the state of Utah, and I am not. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Nope, neighbors, you can speak once each, and who else would like to come?
My name is Sue Swager, and I live on Grandview Hill, and I was at the meeting on June eighth. And it was a difficult meeting to be at, because we were not notified. We could not prepare for that meeting, so it was kind of hard. Um, but I was here and I heard you as a planning commission raise concerns about this tower not looking like the one on University Avenue. I have the transcript with the exact words. I was here to hear, I heard you specifically say it must blend in with the habitat of the area. I am a citizen here. I trust in that. I trust that what you as a planning commission say is what will happen. Not behind closed doors, not where I don't know. I trust that what you say I can count on. I was here and I saw the representative of Atlas Towers nod their head in agreement. And so now all as we are offered is sympathy. I don't understand as a citizen of Provo, Utah. I don't. I heard you try to make sure that we would, the Atlas Towers, the owner of the property, would be a good neighbor. That you, you had concerns about fellow citizens of Provo. What happened to that? I don't understand. So I sit here as a citizen and resident of Provo, Utah, and I don't know what I can trust anymore. I don't know what's going on behind closed doors. I trust you would notify me. I trust that that is the kind of community that Provo, Utah is, and that you are as a planning commission, that our planning department is, that they want us to be notified and know so that we can be informed and we can have a good community. So that's just what I want to say, because I'm shocked. I'm surprised. I am absolutely stunned. I am absolutely stunned that this is how our city works. And so that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
All right, I'm, I'm going to go back to this. I'm curious how, I remember you appearing at the June eighth meeting and, and hearing your remarks, and I, how did you get noticed to the, without June?
Karen Salmon told me. Karen Salmon told me. So it was literally the day before the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Richard Terry? I live just south of the Zobel's, the house right next door. I have, I have a quick question and an invitation. The question is, when you issue a conditional use permit, do you actually just take their word for it, or do you go to the site and see what it really is, what it will look like, visualize the outcome? Question, do you, do you go there? Do you do that? Do you physically go? Because did any of you go to this one? You did? Okay. Before or after it was issued? The day, the day of you did? Oh, today? No, that's what I meant, before it was built. Okay. An invitation, except for you, because you've said you've been there. I would like to invite all of you to our home, to the Zobel's home, and look at it firsthand. See what you think. See if that is something you would want right outside your window, because it's, it's horrible. And I think you would all agree. Thank you.
Can I ask you, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm going to keep asking it. Mr. Terry, how did you receive, did you receive notification for the June eighth meeting?
No, we did not. This is my wife, Mary. We did not.
Okay.
No.
All right, all right.
My name's Richard Wilkinson, and I just have a short comment. A concern, I'm within the five hundred to the thousand foot radius. But this is my concern with forty years of development experience as a developer, having worked with city councils and planning commissions in four different states. I've seen this before, but it's perhaps a recommendation for the planning commission. When a conditional use permit is granted and there's a change made, in my personal opinion, those who are immediately affected should be advised, at least personally, to be aware of the change. Unfortunately, in this situation, this meeting, the time that has been spent or wasted, the concerns, the devaluation perhaps of property could have all been avoided by the courtesy of a notification that there had been a change and to have some input from those who are directly being affected. This is not uncommon, unfortunately, but it seems to be a common courtesy if there's not a legal obligation. With, once that permit is issued and it's represented to be located in a specific area, that the individuals should then be notified if there's a change. Those are my thoughts. I think these go to the future, perhaps more than even this situation, though they do apply here. And I hope that the planning commission will take note of that and make an issue in the future, perhaps of direct notification of those who are most imminently affected by these decisions of changes. I think the, the whole crux of the issue here is that there was a change made. There was no opposition to the tower. They were workable. They were willing to work with the city. But in the end, there were changes made that created this issue. So it would be my recommendation that the planning commission review perhaps methods of eliminating this issue in the future. I think it will bring a lot more harmony to these meetings and perhaps an elimination for the need of many of these meetings.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that would like to speak?
It's kind of scary. My name's Richard Clifford. I live at fourteen sixty-one North, twenty-one hundred West. I actually was the previous owner of these two properties we're talking about. And I'm here with two good neighbors, the Zobel's, and Kent Jordan's back here. And I believe that he has the right to develop his property within the laws of the community or the zoning, whatever that is. And Zobel has the right for, to maintain a beautiful view. They built probably a two million dollar home. I'm not sure what it is for that beautiful lake view. And it's been compromised. What I think is the biggest argument here is the impression was it was on the right, now it's on the left. When we made that change to the conditional use permit, that's where I think we failed to get involved with the neighbors and say, we're going to move this, we got to move it. Where would be a location that would accommodate everybody? And we wouldn't be here today. And this would have been a much simpler, because it's hard to go back after the fact. Because now you end up in a more of a legal type of battle than just having a neighbor conversation. Because like I said, I love both my neighbors and they, they both have their, their needs. And it's just like me. I'm in the house just barely north. I see the tree there. And I'm not sure where the right place is, because I know if you go over there, so you got them very big power lines. And you probably couldn't be within them, because it fell over and hit that and wipe out everybody's power, you know, so pretty much that. And my notification was, I didn't get one, but I knew it was coming on, because I saw them down there doing a survey up by the original spot. And then I was out of contact after that point, you know, so.
Thank you.
So.
I appreciate, I did see your declaration. I.
Yeah, I did sign that. And what's interesting, I got a notice for this meeting, but I didn't get one for the previous. And I don't know what, what made the difference, you know, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm mostly just curious to see like who, who got some and who didn't.
Yeah, so I did this time, but not last time. And like I said, both, both neighbors, I appreciate, and I appreciate development, because I built that barn there and I was here when I had to solicit to build the barn. But it was interesting that the movement, I think, is what caused this without coming back and talking to neighbors. So in the future, that's probably, I think, the person before me declared that same thing. If we make an adjustment to conditional use permit, then let's get back and talk to the community and say, okay, we got to move it somewhere else. Where's the best place?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other community members that would like to speak? Okay, we will close public comment on this item. And now is the time when we as commissioners will talk amongst ourselves and ask any clarifying questions that we have and I'm going to go ahead and start. Is that okay? It's very difficult to separate the idea of people not knowing about something and, and whether the decision should have even been addressed in the first place. But just trying to focus on these reasons for revocation. If we were to say move it somewhere else, it would be in someone else's line of sight. I have a personal experience where I bought property with a beautiful view of the mountains and I now have six homes that were allowed to have Phil brought in. So I didn't go to the meeting to contest the subdivision, because my backyard was the high point. And I now live in a fishbowl. I don't, I, I know that we've said that Utah has a, your view isn't a guaranteed right. And I, I sort of feel like the same thing, that I used to have a really fantastic view too. I'm impressed. The Atlas Tower went personally to these residents' houses and talked about the plans with them. It's unfortunate that things changed and that information didn't get portrayed. But the information was accurate at the time that they talked to them. That also tells me that these people did have notice, because they talked to a representative. They knew something was going on. Once again, information changed, and that's not in our purview, but I feel like that speaks highly that, and I also remember this meeting in June. And I too felt that the applicant at the time was very forthcoming and very willing to work on things. And nobody was trying to build an eyesore. That having been said, when you build next to a freeway zone or when you own property next to a freeway zone, you would anticipate that freeway uses would take place on that adjacent property. So it's really hard for me to say, I'm sorry about a tower, but it would be a billboard or a, a power line or noisy traffic or some, there's, you know, it's the zone that it's in. That's like saying, I'm sorry you built next to the train track and now you hate that you have to hear the trains going by all the time. So I'm just having a hard time with those. Okay, but I'm getting off. I, I do not feel like there was misrepresentation, because I saw how carefully the applicant tried, they, they did not know that people hadn't been noticed. It wasn't an intentional deceit. I do not feel that there was fraud taking place. I do not feel that they were intentionally trying to mislead people. It was perhaps an oversight that can be addressed by another body, but we don't have the power to address that amongst us. At that meeting, we as a commission talked about it being below the hill and that that would address the scale being appropriate. At that meeting, we discussed the appearance and felt that an evergreen tree was more acceptable than a palm tree or, or something else that was being offered. I, a palm tree was never offered. I'm just throwing that out as a vegetation that we actually have in the area. And we discussed the safety and as was told to us, we were assured that there were other bodies governing this. So I do not feel that we even weren't given enough information to make that decision. So the use hasn't changed. The use hasn't ceased. The conditions we asked them to meet were met. It's not an unsafe use. And they haven't expanded the use. So unless we as a commission determine that there was in fact fraud by the information being different, I, I don't think we have an argument for revocation. That's me. Sorry, that was a lot of information, but I've been writing it all down. Mr. Whitlock, do you have anything you would like to discuss or share?
I, I just have a couple of questions, probably for Provo's legal staff. So if you kind of take the argument being made by the applicant, we've decided that the first one with no notices is not necessarily germane to this, the purview of this commission. Two is that essentially the argument that the planning commission did not verify the facts of the original application with two problems being the first, that the proposed structure was not compatible with the height and mass of existing buildings and utility structures. And the second, that the antenna location blends with existing vegetation. Those are the two points of contestation. What I'm curious about is how do we interpret that argument for this commission? Is that, is that relevant at all?
When you mean interpret, like?
So, so, so Mr. Jeff's, is that, is that your name? Do I got your name right? Perfect. I'm, I'm Jeff, so it's, it's easy. So one of his primary arguments is that if you look, if I open up, uh, now I was kind enough to send this to me, is, is in the original meeting, it says, in addition to the conditional use standards set forth in section fourteen oh two oh four zero, Provo code, the planning commission shall make the following findings for any cellular faculty subject to conditional use permit. And then there's a, there's a whole list of findings, and there's basically two that he's had, that he says is not actually, the, the current reality does not match. And his argument is that we didn't actually verify that those would be, that per this section, that those were, would be followed. And so I'm, I'm wondering, how do we interpret that argument? Like, how do, I'm just looking for guidance here.
Just in determining whether that statute was met during the last hearing, do you mean, I mean, the code?
Is it, is it germane to this current conversation? Because I agree with his point. Like, I do agree that it doesn't seem that it does match the existing vegetation and that it is higher than surrounding buildings. But I'm curious, like, what do I do with that opinion relative to this current hearing?
Uh, that's, that's also an appeal issue, simply because we're dealing with whether we're revoking the CUP or not. So that's why these six findings like to determine whether or not one of these things had.
So it's only, it's only here, basically. So this, basically the sine qua non of this entire thing is A, was there misrepresentation?
Potentially, right? Because that could affect, like, was there misrepresentation on one of those statutes or fraud in some way? Or, or potentially the hearing, to clarify, because it does sound like that's one of the biggest public concerns of what is required for public notice. Provo City is required to send out public notice, but they're not required to know that you received it. Unfortunately, there's not, you don't have to sign anything that you received it. We're simply required to send it in the post office. We have the list of addresses or the applicant is in that case. As far as the city is part of, like, we, part of the application process, Brandon, is that the, is that right? We send it out, like, when you're applying for CUP and for these hearings, there's a list that I believe you showed me the program, right, that you gather the addresses. And then that's sent to, in the June eighth case, the applicant sent that out. In those cases, they're required to send that out and goes. Can we save these questions? Because we can't, we can't answer them, like. Right, as far as. So I, I mean, it, it's simply a matter of verifying, here's the addresses. They're required to send it out as part of the process. So I, I mean, if that's the argument that they've misrepresented, that they sent anything out. But it's a matter of that, that's up to the commission, planning commission here to determine. Okay, she said that it, it, there was no way to verify that. There was no system in place. So we're going to, just all we have to go off of is that those who were required to send it out claim they sent it out. And we're going to stick to this. We'll just have to debate whether we think that was met or not. Okay?
Just another, I mean, this isn't, we're a, we're not a judicial body, right? We don't take evidence into our meeting.
Correct.
If we did, we don't have testimony under oath. These people make statements, you know, at the pulpit. But we, there, no one's under, no one's, you know, raising their right arm and, and putting their hand on a Bible. Nobody's, there's no affidavits or notaries where you present your driver's license. We're not a judicial body.
The city sends out the notices. We don't take anybody's word for that. The city has the applicant pay a mailing fee as part of their application fee, and the city creates the mailing list, the city prints the postcards, and the city mails it out.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Gonzalez, do you have any things you'd like to discuss with the commission? About making this decision?
I don't, not right now, no.
Mr. Knudsen? Ms. Kendall?
Can I ask the city to clarify? We were told in the last meeting that conditions were met regarding height and mass of the existing building. Can you clarify how those conditions were met? But are those conditions exactly? I, my thought, we had.
When, so number one, I, I wasn't the one who reviewed that application for, I didn't review the CUP. It wasn't my application. But the requirement, there is no specific requirement that says, okay, a cell tower can only be eighty feet tall or one hundred feet tall. In, in section fourteen thirty-four ninety, it sets for things that can exceed the height requirement of a specific zone. It says that antennas, radio towers, and so forth can exceed that height. And then when you go into the requirements for monopole towers, it says that it gives you the one hundred and sixty foot requirement. It doesn't give you a height requirement. It just says that it has to, the pole has to be set back two, twice the, the, it has to be set back a distance that is at least twice the height of the monopole. So there's nothing that says it can't be a hundred and fifty feet tall. I, I suppose if you wanted to grant that, you could, but it, it just has to be set back a sufficient distance so that there's a fall zone, so that if it falls over, it's not going to fall on somebody's house. So there was a process that staff went through. And prior to the issuance of the CUP, they reviewed the, the code. They reviewed the, the requirements of the R, or rather the A one zone. They reviewed the requirements of fourteen thirty-four two fifty subsection eleven, which has the, what sets, which sets forth the requirements for monopole structures. So all of those requirements reviewed, your report of action says, again, a, a member of staff came here and said that Atlas Tower meets all the conditions for a monopole tower outlined in Provo City Code fourteen thirty-four two fifty-eleven, which included those, those findings that had been brought up. And so staff went through a very thorough review process. When that application comes in, it goes a two-week. it goes a two week review process is triggered. It goes through the plant, through planning staff, through public works, through power, through through a whole host, the fire marshal, number of city departments. And it is very uncommon for a planning application to get make it through on one review. So almost always, and I don't, I can't think in my fifteen years of one time where I saw a planning application go through on its first time. So almost certainly, this went through a second two week review. And then, once all of the requirements were found to be met, it went, it was scheduled for a planning commission hearing. When we get ready to send these, calendar these items and and bring them to you, we make sure that notices are are established. I have to had to do this the other day. For this application, I I there's an application where I click the click the parcel and it and it generates me a list of everybody that's within five hundred feet or whatever parameter. In this case, I did six hundred and fifty feet because of and and it well, it was really to meet the five hundred foot requirement. So we sent ma- made a list, tried to to even go a little above that. We make that list, give it to our secretaries, they prepare. It's it's a very common thing we do every single time an application is brought to you. We we make the make a notice map, we prepare a spreadsheet with all the addresses and then our secretaries prepare, prepare the notices on a postcard and they are sent out standard mail and that that happens every single time. And here here's the, if you want me to to show you the list, and now I can't, just like was said before from Mr. Springer, I can't, you know, there there's no one verifying that those notices came to their homes, but I can tell you that there were, there was a list prepared of this is the list that was that staff prepared for that CUP. It looks like it has somewhere around three hundred. There there wasn't a a thousand, there wasn't a notice for noticing prepared for a thousand foot distance, but that that was the list that was prepared by staff. And those were the people that should have received notice. Those are the people that that we made the effort to send notice out to them. So I, no, we never verify whether or not it it made that made it to them, but we do send out the notices. So.
So can you can you specifically address in fourteen point zero two point zero four zero of the Provo City Code? A says that the proposed structure is compatible with the height and mass of existing building and utility structure. How did we, just to help me understand how we reconcile?
I I my mind goes to the compatibility. It doesn't say that it compatible doesn't mean that it it can't go above the height of those of 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 the existing structures. There there's a reason why they're that tall and and Atlas can can speak to that, but I I'm not sure what's what what the planner, what what their what their line of thinking was when they reviewed that, but I can tell you that it it doesn't seem unreasonable to me that it that a use or or some type of structure would be allowed to exceed the height of homes. In fact, fourteen thirty four ninety specifically allows state steeples antennas to go higher because they provide a public benefit. And so
So we're relying on the compatible compatible word and I because my first thought when I looked at that is, well, how would any monopole ever meet anything around it? Unless it's in the downtown zone next to a skyscraper, right?
By it, exactly.
So that's what was confusing to me, but if we're relying on the word compatible, okay, I understand that. This was an area where it's compatible with that sort of use.
I do recall that this this was brought up in in amongst staff. There was discussion about it. I do recall the the discussion about the tower, the the base of the tower sitting well below the homes to the east. And so, and that is the case. I saw it today. The 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 site sits well below the 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 homes that lie to the east. There there's a substantial great difference between those two.
Thank you. Mr. South, do you have any comments you want to discuss with us?
I certainly appreciate the residents and committee members giving their thoughts. I think we've maybe been overly loose in scope and procedure here enough that I don't think more discussion outside of that is helpful. So I think the stuff that we have to discuss is covered and I.
Ms. Kendall?
I I just want to say a couple of things. I'm very sympathetic to this. Those pictures, I'm so sorry. Very sympathetic to that. And the problem is, we have a certain scope of control and many things are falling right outside of that. So the misrepresentation has to be to this body. Not to weeks before it. So the misrepresentation didn't occur here. We knew with the gentleman who said, we need to do better at making sure that people get noticed if there's a change. Maybe not in the legal code, but something that should take place. And boy, if it would be nice to move this, I would sure love to have this moved. If that's something that would be, but I don't think it's required of the of the applicant to move it because there was no misrepresentation. It's all about misrepresentation that has to be to this body. So if they weren't notified, I think that would be another thing because, as Mr. Jeff's pointed out, Utah code says that people have to be notified. There's evidence that they were notified. Knew this was happening. And I don't know that it has to be. I I think that would meet that requirement. I I feel really like, where was the neighborhood chair? And this is just really, really sad to me. Based on what we have the ability to do at this point. I wish there was a way for them to appeal, but at this point, I there was misrepresentation, which is of those things there, the only one. Everything else has.
Mr. Whitlock?
Yeah, so sorry, I just have one, one more question I want to ask to a couple groups. Because I, to me, that's really what this comes down to is for a like, was misrepresentation happened to this body? Because this is the body that granted the conditional use permit? So I I'm curious, just for those council or commission members that were in that meeting, if they felt like misrepresentation, misrepresentation happened in that meeting.
I feel like if anything, they were way more open than I would have expected. But once again, that's sympathy aside. That's what we received felt very forth forthcoming, like a very forthright. Is that the right word?
I agree with that, but the only thing is, had we known that when the information came out, moved one hundred and fifty feet, had we known that people would have immediately objected to that, would we have made a different decision?
Well, I I don't know, it seems to me like you go down the row like it's it doesn't matter where the tower is placed on that property.
Actually, that's not true because they have a an open property right next to them where they already said they would allow.
No, I I think this, I think we had another resident say that they could see it from an angle.
Okay, I'm gonna have to ask the people in the audience not to shout out.
There they do own an open property where they've agreed it could go to the north.
Right, but there's other residents on that same row that they can see, they can see today.
It wouldn't be directly behind them. It wouldn't be directly behind like it is in.
But then their view of the lake would be obstructed or their view of Timpinogus would be obstructed or.
But he's built there. So anybody who buys there knows it's there. I.
I own and and this is the the part that I get back to is like, I understand the claims of lack of notification and I have a really hard time with that because what they're saying, they're accusing the city of employees in the city lying to us, lying to their supervisors and and development services, that they didn't in fact send out notification, that they didn't. I have a really hard time buying that. I've I've been as I've been a city employee before for the city of Indianapolis. I I worked that position with pride and honor and respect of the the public and to 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 hear that it it it's the pretext that that the city has never sent out notifications and I I have a really hard time buying that. Second, there is no private cause of action to preserve views. There's no, there's no civil cause of action for that.
I agree with.
So so you feel like, is this really about the misrepresentation or is it really about the the obstruction of the view? And obstruction of the view, it's not, it's not a civil cause of action.
No, I agree. It's not about the obstruction of the view. But whoever, would we, would we have taken that into consideration? Would we have said to the applicant, could you move it just a little further if there was so much public opinion about where exactly that was located? Applicant still gets the tower.
Kendall, can I interrupt one moment? Your mic, if you can speak into your mic. You're you're cutting in and out.
Okay, sorry. So anyway, I I think that's my question is, would we have made a different decision? And so misrepresentation doesn't have to be intentional or fraudulent. It can sometimes be a mistake.
I'd just like to speak to that. Under the legal definition in Utah, misrepresentation does require intent.
Yeah, it's willful. There's willfulness.
All right. If legally it requires intent, then I don't think we were intentionally misled. Then that, then I have to change that. Yeah.
Uh, I had one other question. Are you, Mr. Jeff's arguing that in this, in the meeting and in the June meeting in front of this body that misrepresentation happened? And if, yeah. Am I allowed to still ask him questions? Yeah.
Come to the podium. Will you come to the mic?
You're saying it to the, okay, understand. Thank you.
Mr. Jeff's, will you come to the mic? Mr. Jeff's?
Yeah, can.
Your answer needs to be on the mic.
Sorry, my question made you come to the mic.
Sorry. So no, my my, I do not see any evidence that there was a misrepresentation made in this particular meeting relative to the height of the tower. No, but but the misrepresentation was made to the Zobels and to the Terries so that they didn't continue to follow up with the process.
And that was the the representative from Atlas who personally visited them and and said it would it's gonna be a few feet higher than the billboard.
Couple of feet higher than the billboard is what was actually stated. So the.
That makes sense. So you're saying that was done to them personally, which caused them to not continue to follow the process, which caused them to miss their window to appeal.
Well, but on top of that, the argument that you're making and 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 I've not made the, I've not made the argument. There may be made some other arguments, but I've not made the argument that the city intentionally did not mail the 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 notices out. I've not ever said that.
And and I'm glad he asked the question because you you are clarifying that, no, this is just in the representations the Alice employee made to the Reddick Terry and the Zobels.
But I think to your point, the issue is, the statute requires you to give notice, but the statute also provides that if you didn't get notice, that that means that you're not foreclosed from challenging it. I think that there is a requirement that you actually receive notice in order for you to be foreclosed from the obligation to challenge it within the thirty day or the fourteen day timeframe. And there is, contrary to what you're saying, there is in fact a statement under penalty of perjury by both the the Mrs. Obell as well as the Terries. That's what's in there. That's not just a statement that they made. That's under penalty of perjury. It's the equivalent of being in court. And all of those other documents that were signed and submitted by everybody else, they're also under penalty of perjury. So they are as the equivalent of if they were in court and they're saying, I didn't get it. So it doesn't, I'm not challenging the fact that the city may have in fact sent out the notices. I wasn't asserting something improper on that. What I am saying is that they didn't get them. And because they didn't get them, they're not bound to the timeframe that you're work, that you're saying they don't have the ability to appeal.
But ultimately, isn't that a question of fact that a court would decide not not a well, no, in in my opinion, not a
No, I think this, I think.
Not a planning commission.
I think this body could take the position that there is a signed declaration that says, we didn't get the notice. And therefore, this body could take the position, we accept that, that they didn't get the notice and therefore they are not bound by the the timeframe for an appeal or a an approval. And and so therefore, they still have the ability to challenge the the ability, the the challenge what was done by the planning commission because they're not foreclosed because they were not given notice. They were, the notice was mailed, but they were not given notice. They didn't actually know about it. They didn't have any basis to come in and and challenge or to to appear.
Right, because it was gonna be eighty feet just or just above the billboard, right?
And and the actual notice?
The actual notice that if that is a question for the court and that and that could be.
But I think this body can still decide it. They could still decide notice had not been given and therefore we can readdress.
I don't think we, I mean, honestly, I would like to do that, but I don't think we have the ability to do that.
Not within the our code as well as Utah.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, we have to take that counsel right there. Yeah.
It's the limiting to those six things. And it sounds like you've narrowed it to the first one, whether there was misrepresentation and fraud. The issue of notice is an appeal issue, an actual notice specifically would be an appellate process on that and determining what was actual notice.
True. I I think that is an appeal issue that we can make. I think the other problem that I have in terms of your argument is is if in fact the commission acted inconsistently with their own ordinance, I think the commission has the ability to correct what they've done wrong.
So that is if they've acted in some way that is not in accordance with our code, that is an appeal issue. This, right now, we're dealing with revoking a CUP and therefore it just deals with those six issues.
But it doesn't, it doesn't alter the fact that this commission could say, we made a mistake. We didn't make the correct findings. Can a commission decide that we made a mistake, we made incorrect findings and therefore we fix it? If you don't have, the commission doesn't have the ability to fix its own errors, then I don't know how it ever can survive the process of not of fixing something that it did wrong. And that's all we're suggesting. It did this wrong. It didn't make the findings.
But under this, did they do something wrong under this as well as the actors?
Did they do something wrong? Did they not do the appropriate findings? If they don't do the appropriate findings, then the then the permit was improvidently issued and shouldn't have been issued. And the the commission can go back and say, oops, we goofed. Let's undo what we did wrong.
That's the purpose of an appeal is is to be able to be review, review their findings essentially.
Well, I I mean, speaking to that, this, you're talking about section fourteen and when it has additional requirements and there's like five, six, seven of them. And and we're not finding, we I I don't I don't think we find anything that would change that would make us, if we went through those requirements again, there's nothing that would enter mind.
The commission has to actually make those findings. That's what the code section says. You have to make those findings.
I think Mr. Gonzalez is saying that we we feel like we did. And I believe that the staff has read those out and addressed every one of them.
Particularly when we said we we found that the requirements were met and that includes section, the the section fourteen additional requirements for cellphone towers.
Okay. Commissioners. I think we have covered very thoroughly the concerns and we are not able to make anyone feel happy about most of them. But what we can do is assess A through F on our screen. Whether we feel like any of those apply. And if what we do tonight isn't satisfactory to either party involved, they can take it to legal venues, but our responsibility is to assess A through F. So commissioners, do you feel like any of them have been met? Or haven't been met? How do we want to, how do you word that? Do any of these apply so that a revocation is in order? I do not feel like I was had this misrepresented to me. I feel like I understood it. Someone may not like the judgment calls we made or the rationale we used, but I feel like I understood it and made a decision based on good information. Felt like we we took the hill, the adjacent to the freeway, the the fact that cellphone towers in and of themselves are generally ugly and we could hope for something exponentially better than what we see and talked about appearance and safety and I felt like we had the facts. So does anyone here on the commission feel like for A applies that this item was misrepresented to us on June eighth, twenty twenty two, or that there was any fraud involved in it? As far as we know.
I just have heart.
I just have heartburn over, I would have made a different decision. I think we all would have had we, because we specifically, I remember asking, what is the neighborhood's feeling? Where, where does the neighborhood stand on this? And so that bothers me. So was that misrepresentation? I guess not legally, but bothers me.
Well, I, I remember there being multiple four, five, six neighbors appearing. And the primary concern seemed mostly just two. I felt like more. I don't know. Maybe it burned in my heart, but, um, it, the primary concern at that time was, uh, health and safety, uh, the radio frequency waves. That, that was the, that was the crux of, of the, the complaint. And, um,
We had several experts speak to that.
The attorney from Atlas spoke way too long going over, um, over, over the, the, addressing the, the 5G frequencies. But we, that seemed to be the primary complaint at the time.
The reason being that the people most affected didn't know it was going to be moved 150 feet. All right, commissioners. We can beat a dead horse all night, but we're done. Let's decide whether we, uh, move forward with the decision or continue this item. And if we continue it, we have to have a good reason for it. Something we expect to have them change before we hear it again. We have a motion on this item?
I move that the planning commission deny the proposed revocation of a conditional use permit PLCUP 20220126 for a monopole structure parcel 190470122.
Okay, that was a motion by Mr. South to revoke or to, uh, deny the revocation as listed in item number one. Do we have a second? Mr. Knutson has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay. We will vote. We are voting in favor of denying. Or nay is not in favor of denying. Yeah, double negative. I just want to clarify what you're actually voting for. Mr. Whitlock.
I'm gonna abstain.
Mr. Gonzalez? I will vote aye. Mr. Knutson?
Aye.
Ms. Kendall?
The difference between abstain and nay is?
Your vote doesn't count. You are not voting.
I'm gonna vote nay.
Mr. South?
Aye.
Okay, we have four aye, one nay and one abstention. If that's the right word. Um, so this item number one, the request to revoke the conditional use permit has been denied by the planning commission. Any further issues that someone has can be addressed with provost's legal counsel or where do, where do they go if they have concerns?
The appellate process, as far as you're willing to, you can appeal this.
And where do they go to find that?
The district court.
The district court.
To the, it's our, um, board of appeals. So through the planning, um, department.
Go to the office and talk to them.
Talk to them and you can check that with.
She said, go to the, the development services department and talk to a staff member there and they will help you understand what the appeal process would be to pursue this legally. Probably the development services office.
Development, sir, tell, tell me the apartment again.
Development Services. All right, let's move on to item number two. Item number two is legislative, which means that we are just making a recommendation to the city council. Um, I've been told that, oh, it's already on here. David Cabanella requests an ordinance text amendment to actually multiple text amendments to section. Can we have you guys step out to talk, please? David Cabanella requests ordinance text amendment to section 14.21A.080 transitional development standards in the DT1 general downtown zone. I think standards is a redundant word there. No, in the DT1 zone standards. This has citywide application and Mr. Wright will be presenting it to us.
All right. Thank you very much, commission. Um, so the applicant is, uh, asking you to, uh, make a recommendation to the city council on this item for their text amendment to amend the city code for the, the downtown zone as it relates to the transitional development standards, um, in, in that code. Um, they're requesting to have them apply to fewer properties than they currently do as it's written. The reason for the standards are to help protect the surrounding properties to our downtown zone because the downtown zone is a very intense the, um, permissible zone for development. And so having these transitional standards are, are placed in there to help protect the surrounding uh, properties, uh, to the downtown that might have a, a lower intensity, uh, development. And so they're very important for that. As you can see here, the applicant is, uh, proposing some, some texts that would change the way the, the code reads and is applied, um, in section 1A. For example, it would be, um, applying it to our, our neighborhood future land use maps. So we have a few neighborhood plans that contain a, a future land use map. And so as opposed to how it currently is, um, applied to the specific zones that you can see that are um, struck out, uh, the RC, the R1, the pro zones, um, and, and pertain to the neighborhood future land use maps. And so this isn't something we typically have in our code because that's, that's more of an advisory guiding document and not a regulatory document like our city zoning map and our zoning code. So, another, another section that they're proposing to remove is section two there, as you can see, um, where that has a requirement, there's a 20 foot setback. That would be from the, any property line of the downtown zone that's adjacent to a, a neighboring residential zone. So they're proposing to have that removed. Um, so staff's not supportive of, um, lowering our transitional development standards, um, to allow for development projects to be profitable um, in the downtown zone and is recommending denial of this ordinance text amendment.
I was having a hard time understanding what was different about it. I can see the cross hatches and everything, but can you like, give me a summation of the difference between what's there and what's being asked?
Yeah. So I kind of tried to highlight on that. So they're taking out the zoning, um, classifications, RC, R1, and they're adding in the, the neighborhood land use designations from the land use map. So that's one change. The other, like I said, was that they're, as you can see there, they're adding rear yard, which currently isn't in there. Um, because I think section two states that it's 20 feet, um, instead of 15 that they're requesting. So I think those are some of the bigger, uh, changes.
When I read that, I assumed that there wasn't a standard before and that it's just a standard now, which seems more limiting. But you're saying instead of having it applied to the other standards, it has to apply to these ones instead. So these are more permissive.
Yeah, this would, this would make it so more properties would be able to, um, not have to follow these or our current standard.
Thank you. Does anyone else have questions for Mr. Wright? All right, um, Mr. Cabanella. All right, you may come to the podium and, um, tell us about your application.
Hi, my name is David Cabanella, resident of Provo. Uh, this came about, and I'm wondering if we can put my slides up, Dustin. Where we discovered this in our, um, efforts to develop was as we were reading through the code, we discovered how this touched, um, our zoning. Is this, was this gonna work for me, Dustin, if I move it? Here we go. So we, we discovered this wanting to develop a piece of, uh, dirt here in Provo that is in the DT1 zone. And I will show you on the map where that is here in a second, but what this map shows where the hash marks are, those are neighborhoods that already have plans. Um, that you discussed, they have neighborhood plans already in place, Joaquin, Franklin and Mazer. And we're north in the temp, which is, if you can see on this map, we're north on, we're sitting on 500 north and 200 west. It currently doesn't have a neighborhood plan. This next slide. I'm trying to go to the right. There we go. Shows Joaquin, Mazer and Franklin as it currently, this is out of the general plan that just got approved. And if you'll notice, uh, in the Joaquin neighborhood on the very far left where it's gray, that's DT1. And as you get a little bit further, um, where DT, this, remember this is where DT1 touches neighborhoods is how this code's written. You can see in Mazer where there's a yellow, there's a blue dash line. All those dash lines are where this, uh, touches and Franklin, it touches just a tiny bit up in the northeast, uh, section. And on Joaquin, as you can see, there's, as you get to 500 north, there's a little gray square and it's all hash marked. That's currently batching singles. That's where we know there's a lot of high density. That's also where the library is, where that hash or that blue is. Now, this is only three areas in Provo that our request would affect. In reality, if this goes in the way we've written it, there's actually only three areas that this would even apply to us where someone could develop. And where they're at, one happens to be the library, which you're not going to develop. One in the south of Joaquin is a church. And the major is actually the county area. And when I say what it applies to is you'll notice in our, we'll get back to our code. Actually a number A up there, it talks about Provo city's planned future land use maps. There are fu- future land use maps right now for these three, for these three neighborhoods. What does border these neighborhoods, which are hash mark, are residential homes less than three stories right now? That is the purpose of this code is to protect these areas that are that we know that we're turning more residential. It's kind of obvious that we want to protect some of these areas and the city wants to protect them. We're not trying to change that code. The way that we've written it, no one can build in any of these areas what we want to build because anything less than three stories or two and a half stories, you cannot build the 60 foot requirement is still there, which is what's in this code. So we couldn't, someone can't come up and build something taller. If you, if we got this approved by the council, the only places that you can build taller in these three areas because every other area in Provo has less than three stories next to it. Except we go a little further. Oops, I'm sorry. Get these maps straight here. This is just another picture of the, uh, the neighborhoods and where they're at. Right now, this is where we're developing, we would like to develop. If you see the upper right hand corner where it's a dark on University Avenue and it says the DT1 is actually, there's DT2. And if you get further up, you'll see where it touches university goes to blue, right where the arrow is right there. That is actually RC overlaps right there. And on that corner, university, if you look at the lower left hand corner of that square is our um, ground that we're wanting to develop. And what's north of it, and you can see that this is in this temp neighborhood. What's north now, an MDR, an HDR, a pro zone. We've been spot zoning that whole area now for years since the RC has gone in, in an effort to control development. But this neighborhood north of us has lots of tall buildings. So we maintain this is not an area where the intent is to save for a single family. And just north of us is already an existing, I'm sorry, is an existing, let me get these things straight here, is an exist, these are kind of out of order. But is an existing condo project that is four stories tall. And I'll find, and this, this shows us right now, this is kind of a massing model. On the left here would be where we would develop on 500 north. On the right, that's the women's gym. Behind it is a developed, fully developed 50 plus unit townhome complex that is actually four stories out of the ground. The first story is the parking garage. The building sells or three stories. So our, and if you see that little gray circle in the middle, that's where this 60 foot touches our proposed right there, touches our proposed project. This is an aerial view of the same piece of dirt. This is actually a really good way to see what's going on there. So we have University Avenue on the right, 500 north. And if you look north of us, there's a s- single family house. It's actually in this DT1 zone. They do not want to sell. So our building doesn't really get close to that one, but it's in DT1, even though it's residential. And then north of us is this completed project. And so we, we looked at this and the reason why we're asking for this change is this just gives us some flexibility to be able, as we get into engineering and do underground parking, it gives us flexibility to maybe push our building further north. And even where it is, you can see it clips it on the corner. And under the current zone, we would have to build lower in height than that project that's north of us. Which kind of was stumped us a little bit. It's a head scratcher and you go, well, really? Well, what happened in this particular case and in many cases with the RC is a well-intended policy. As executed in real life, there are some areas that it perhaps isn't working as well. And there's areas that it's working fabulously in, in the RC. And you can see what I showed you earlier on some of these slides. And so we, we believe that we've written this strict enough that it actually does only apply to like two areas. And then all the other areas in the city are protected. If you're less than three stories, no one can build taller than you or less than two and a half stories. You won't be able to affect the transition zone. And so we did go through, this modeling here shows um, what our existing rules are, which is what I could, so if you take the very top at 100 west and 500 north, that's actually, we can go almost what 10 stories plus and we could go right up against that single family home, which is so fifth north, you look on the right side of this, the very top one is what we could do now bumped right up against that, um, that single family home right there. Proposed, we're asking for, you know, you could go right up to it and then you see the townhomes. In reality, well, the home's not for sale, but even if it was, the practical outcome of what we're building is something that's been more like five stories or six stories. Because it's only one acre. We can't fit 10 stories and park everybody. It's too, it's just too tight of an area. So the practical thing is it's going to be five or six stories less anyways. And so we think in reality, this really has no effect, this, this code change. And so we were a little stumped at why the city was against it. Um, I think that we're always worried about unintended consequences. And I, and I can appreciate that, but we think we've written. And I, and I can appreciate that, but we think we've written this that protects all the other RCs uh, around us. That's really all I.
Can you tell me on that, um, the last slide that you showed us? Do any of those, you said practical, the practical is what is on the bottom?
Yes.
If the rules were not changed, if the ordinance text amendment were not given, could you still build what's on that practical outcome?
I could, no, because I can't get into that north, I can't get into that corner. So if you go back to this.
You would have to step back like on that.
I'd have to step back and go to um, I'm not sure where this disappeared to. There it is, there's a massing model. So it clips, I would lose all six of those units. And I might add, we have not gone with a U shaped, where if we got closer and tried to avoid the sixty feet, a U shaped building primarily because the design we've picked is we wanted to offer some of the best views in the valley. These have uninterrupted views of of Y Mountain, Tempanogus, no one's going to build taller in front of us. Um, we just think it's a great, this is a better design for um, what we want. But if we needed to push things here, there, as engineering comes, it, it just handcuffs us to, to being away from it. And you know, what's most troubling is that I gotta be shorter than the guy around me. And I have to be shorter than the project that's already fully developed. And this neighborhood to the north, reasonable man theory is, this is a fully developed neighborhood someday. We've already been zoning out there. And so, this is why we found that a text amendment was a pretty simple thing um, to, to fix that would not actually affect these other areas.
Any questions from commissioners, from Mr. Cabanella? Okay, we might have more later, thank you. We will now open this up for um, neighborhood and um, community comment. Are there any neighborhood or district chairs that would like to speak to this? Anyone else that would like to speak to this? No comments? You guys are just here for fun? And we've had fun, haven't we? Okay, um, commissioners, how do we feel about this? I'm having a hard time understanding why it's necessary. I feel like it's very little square footage that's gained by changing a whole lot of possibilities citywide. Um, maybe Mr. Wright or Mr. Pepperoni, you could answer this for me. Um, wouldn't it be less dangerous just to grant a property specific variance or to do something that was property specific instead of changing the code?
Yeah, it's, it's really hard seeing the HDR adjacent and this, the commercial general opposite, like it. And have it. I, I like trend, I'm, I'm a fan of transitional.
They just don't seem to apply here.
Zoning, but I.
Yeah, I mean, I guess to answer your question, there probably is, uh, if, if they, they have a specific site in mind, it might be um, more appropriate to change the zoning of the surrounding property. Um, if that's all developed out, you know, maybe that's a, a cleaner approach um, to, to rezone the RC zone to a zone that doesn't necessarily change what it can do, it's already built, but find a zone that, that maybe matches that more.
That feels, that feels more appropriate than opening a, a larger widespread can of worms.
Yeah, I, I'd be more comfortable with just specifically identified parcels rezoned to a DT one ra- rather than.
Cause that's what's adjacent, right? That orange is DT one?
We are, the, the property, the applicant.
Oh, they are DT one, okay. It's just the transitional standards that are the problem.
Yeah, so I, I believe there's more than the, the three properties uh, identified by the applicant that would be affected by this text amendment. Um, I think there'd be other issues.
People will find them if we give them the opportunity.
So, I understand that maybe now a little bit better of what they're trying to do, and maybe that's a better approach to maybe try to
Okay.
uh, rezone those surrounding properties, so there's no longer that applicability for the existing transitional standards for their project. Um, and so you can take a closer look at that specific area as opposed to amending the whole downtown uh, transitional standards, because I think the way it's written is going to have more impact.
Mr. Pepperoni, I sense that you have something you'd like to share with us.
Yes, just in direct answer to the question regarding variance. Um, it's very difficult to get a variance for a building you haven't yet built. Because that would kind of be the definition of a self-created hardship. You've designed something that doesn't me code, just me code. So it would be hard to get a variance in this case. Um, we've had discussions before planning commission about transitional standards. We regularly get complaints that our transitional standards aren't stringent enough. Um, I, I would be very concerned about trying to walk those back.
Okay.
I, i- is there a zone that would work for his site, for what he's trying to do?
Um, those transitional regulations kick in anytime you have a very intense zone next to a less intense zone, especially when you're talking about difference in residential uses.
So both properties would have to be rezoned in order for it to help.
Right, and the reason why the DT ones, it has its own transitional standards is for this exact scenario and reason. That's a very intense zone in terms of land use and building height, it's a very intense zone. So we were trying to be respectful of.
You don't want a ten story building next to a single family home.
Well, this is, I'm comparing this to, to this on the nine hundred east project where it was a very tall building next to a house. But because both of them were in the campus mixed zone, it had no effect on it. But these ones are in different zones and the person in the house wants it to stay a house, so that's where our quandary is, right?
You have a prodigious memory.
A what?
Prodigious memory, I'm really impressed, that was good.
Frightening. I was, it was, like you said, it was in my heart. I remembered it. I remembered it because I felt so badly for that shadow that was cast upon them every day and especially in the winter. Commissioners, any other questions, clarifications, concerns?
I mean, for what it's worth, this is just a couple blocks from my house. Um, and that land, I always walk past it with my family, I'm like, I'd love to see something great developed here. So I really like the idea of del- developing it in the project, but I also share the concerns of like eight thirty PM, uh, just went through a really hard meeting, not really sure what all the implications of the city, this, that's really dense language, like I'm, I don't know, I just don't think like a standard has been raised to make such a big change.
Yeah, I agree. I feel like, um, and maybe in the discussion with Mr. Wright and um, Mr. Cabanella before, that maybe they hadn't considered other options. And now there are different ways to in this beast.
I mean, that, that's the point that I am trying to get to, is I don't quite understand what other options there would be, because DT one is pretty much the most uh, lax zone, for lack of a better word, most um, intense zone, as both Mr. Pepperoni said. But uh, I, I, so I don't know what else other options would be, that's what I was trying to understand.
Well, it comes to me back to, it's not our job to give somebody the most bang for their buck either. And so, it's a lovely idea and it's a decent location for it. But it's not our job to make sure that this is the pristine high rise with the best views and so if it's not allowed.
But yeah, the applicant's not wrong though, that like, at least the brief concept we saw, it does kind of fit in with what is becoming that area. Like just a block to the, there's that huge new building around the corner of five hundred and uh, and um, it's freedom. It's about the same exact height, like that, that's the way the neighborhood is trending. But I, so I wish there were a way to potentially try to do what he's doing without a citywide zone change that could have a lot of unforeseen impacts.
I feel like the setback that's shown on that third drawing would still allow for quite a few units. And if there's not enough space to park them anyway, then build the number of levels that would give you that many units and step them back. I feel like it could still happen and it could still be lovely, so I'm not inclined to, to make a zone, a citywide change either.
I, I tend to agree with uh, Jeff and, and you on that, I, and I'm a fan of density, like I.
Density where it belongs.
Yeah, I, like I support, I mean, that, that's right on University Avenue, yeah.
Ms. Kendall?
I just think that we have transition zones for a reason and we should stick to that. I agree with Mr. Pepperoni that we shouldn't. Everybody's going to want to, to have that modified, right? I mean, who wouldn't want to have that modified? So somebody has to live with the transition zone, so I don't think we should change it.
Okay then, any other questions commissioners or discussion items? Then let's entertain a motion for item number two. Whatever we do is a recommendation to the city council. I'm waiting for a motion.
Motion, we recommend to the municipal council denial of the proposed ordinance text amendment to section fourteen point two one A point zero eight zero to reduce the transitional development standards in the DT one zone.
Okay, we have a motion to recommend denial to the municipal council. That motion was by Ms. Kendall, do we have a second? Mr. Knutson has seconded the motion, any discussion on the motion?
Maybe just a question, um, we've, we've expressed interest in trying to facilitate something, or at least explore other options. Does continuing it to look at other options with the idea that it could be, that this would be changed would be more appropriate in this situation?
I think because he's asking specifically for ordinance text amendments, any other change that we would like to see would be a zone change or something, right? Is that what you're implying?
Yes.
So that wouldn't be a good continuance, is that correct? Yeah. Question, okay. Motion to recommend denial to the municipal council, we'll start with Mr. Whitlock.
Uh, yay.
Aye.
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 Okay, that was unanimous um, for item number two. Unanimous in favor of a recommendation for denial. That went against all sorts of grammar rules, I think. Okay, item number three, what time is it? Oh, you made it under the radar. All right, item number three. Item number three is legislative, which means we are making a recommendation and it goes along with item number four, which is administrative. So depending on, we'll, we'll be hearing both of them together. Miller General Contractors, this is item number three, LLC, requests approval of a zone map amendment from the ITOD interim transit oriented development zone to the DT one general downtown zone in order to construct a new apartment building located at four six six south one hundred west. I'd like to note that the address is different and I think it's actually supposed to be four thirty four south one hundred west. It's different on each item, just in case someone didn't catch that. Um, this is in the downtown neighborhood. Item number four, Miller General Contractors is requesting project plan approval for a new one hundred and eight, if I read the report correctly, unit apartment building in the DT one general downtown zone located at four thirty four south one hundred west in the downtown neighborhood. I think we can still hear them even with those inconsistencies in addresses and unit numbers. We're ready for you.
Yeah, so the, the addresses are actually correct and all, I'll show you why here in a second.
Okay. Oh, that's right, because he's got some parcels but not the others, thank you.
Yep, so yeah, this parcel here, that is the correct address uh, shown there for, for these, this parcel, there's actually two parcels, one's a skinny little uh, parcel on the north side of it, but that's the address for it and that's the, on the screen, that's the acreage for this part that's going to be uh, rezoned to um, to match the rest of the project in item number four. Um, so here's the current zoning map, it's in the uh, interim transit oriented development or the ITOD zone. Currently, the rest of the project, we'll show you here in a minute, is uh, to the north in the DT one zone. And so they're requesting uh, that this portion be rezoned to the DT one, so it will all be uh, consistent when the parcels are consolidated into one parcel. Um, here is the current general plan, it shows us a transit oriented development uh, designation, which the proposed project that they're doing would fit there. It's also in our downtown zone, uh, so here's the future land use map in our downtown master plan, which is an appendage of the general plan. And so this area here, you can see where the, the star is, that's where the proposed uh, right there, that's where the proposed uh, rezone would be. Um, so this section is calling for a high density residential with um, a mixed use is permitted there. So, the proposed zone that they're requesting, the DT one zone would fit perfectly with what's shown here in the future land use map, so there'd be that consistency there. Um, so staff is recommending that this request in item three is sent to the council with a positive recommendation to rezone the property. And then we'll talk about the project plan item number four here, so here's the um, on the south end here, that's the property we just talked about to be rezoned. Um, the property outlined in yellow is going to be combined into one parcel for this project to um, allow for this project here that the applicant has submitted for a hundred and eight one bedroom units. Um, they're providing the parking uh, to meet the city code for the DT one zone. The parking is located underground and underneath the, the structure. Uh, the parking is wrapped and uh, from the street for the residential units that would be on the street facing side. Here's the landscape plan, um. So you'll notice that it would meet the downtown streetscape standards, so it would have the widened sidewalks, it'd have the bullbouts at the corners to shorten the crossings for pedestrians. Um, it would help improve the visibility for them and the, and shorten the distance. It would have street trees, tree grates, the lighting, pavers, benches, bike racks, all those things that are contained in our downtown streetscape standards. They'd um, be required to install those, they've shown that here. Um, staff reviewed that to, to see that it would meet those requirements. Here are the elevations that they're proposing, um, they've been to the design review committee. Um, the design review committee uh, recommended approval for it. Um, with the condition that they reduce the amount of stucco um, to twenty percent on each facade, which is what the code requires in the downtown zone. And I believe that's their plan to, to do that, so um, I've included that in the condition of approval for the project plan. Um, yeah, five stories above grade. And Steph's recommendation is for approval, the four conditions outlined in the staff report.
On the slide that showed the parking from up above, that one, um, does that mean that the, the buildings are just above that L on the ou- outer side and it will be open up above, or is that just that level?
So this, this is the main level, the street level, um, so you'd enter in off of four hundred south or off of.
But does the dashed line show where the building would be above that or? Okay, so that, what we see right there is just that level, but up above it would be a building filling in that whole space, right?
Yeah, there'll be residential units above all that parking on the first floor.
I guess I could save that for your presentation, because we'll probably cover that, but thank you.
Yep.
Any questions for Mr. Wright?
Correct, um, the parking there uh, would be a hundred and twenty-two meets the minimum requirement. Um, they're also providing, it might be on the lower level, um, some tandem spaces, so that where there'd be too deep. We don't count those in our code, um, so there's, I believe thirteen of those tandem stalls that would just be in addition to the hundred and twenty-two. So, they meet the hundred and twenty-two and then they have thirteen tandem stalls that will help but don't count towards what we count as required parking.
Viciously anyway. Um, I have a question, um, maybe this is just semantics, but isn't it more logical to go DT one to ITOD instead of ITOD to DT one, since he's got parcels in both half? The reason I ask is because the general plan showed that it, the whole area was designated as a transit oriented development. And so, shouldn't we be moving the zone towards that instead of towards the downtown one? I'm assuming it, it density and parking, whatever, are affected by that switch, but that was the question I, I wondered.
Yeah, so the general plan map, which is older than the updated downtown master plan shows transit oriented development. Um, you're getting transit oriented development with this project because of its proximity to the frontrunner station. So, doesn't matter that it's not in the interim TOD zone, um, the downtown zone is.
I just, if you go to the zone map, it just looked easier to swallow up that, that partial of DT in ITOD since ITOD went up on the right, on the east side than it did to have a little nub of DT go down. So I was just wondering if, to make it a clean order, if that would be cleaner.
Um, it could, the DT one and the ITOD are, are pretty similar. We reviewed it, um, the way the applicant submitted and, and requested, so we know it meets the DT one zone. It probably would meet the IT. It probably would meet the ITOD zone as well, but I couldn't give you that assurance, because I haven't reviewed it to that section of code. But I don't see an issue, because the downtown plan that shows it here is high density residential, and this was done more recently than the general plan. So I, I think it fits that and, and the other as well. I don't see.
I'm just all about clean zoning maps, so.
We, we did talk about that, and ultimately, we, we chose to go this route. It felt like.
It also feels like more of a transit oriented development if we're asking for parking, I mean, if, if parking reductions are being given and all that because of its proximity, so.
Yeah, there's parking reduction, then DT one zone, and in the ITOD zone, so.
Okay. I'm hogging all the questions for Mr. Wright. Does anyone else have any more? All right. Miller General Contractors, do you have a name?
Jason.
Jason.
Jason Miller.
Jason Miller, come to the.
I'm with Miller General Contractors. Our office is in Provo. Built and developed the four hundred element apartments are right across the street from this project.
That's why they look similar?
They look similar, yeah. It's a great project. It's a hundred and eight units. We're, we're putting in one bedroom units. It's the most sought out after apartment. That's the reason why we're building those. We've met all the parking requirements, the, we've tried, we've met with staff and we've tried to meet every requirement that's been asked of us from, from Provo City. We're not really asking for any variances on anything, so. It's a chill pass.
Is your visitor parking accounted for in the hundred and twenty-two? Like, do you have some of them that'll be marked for visitors, or are they just going to have to find a spot on the street?
Or delivery also.
Yeah. The code doesn't seem to address that, so we're addressing for the apartments, what the apartments need for that.
That would be a concern that I have, because those people will come and have to park somewhere.
We have tried to maximize the parking, like we talked about with the tandem stalls, so there might be a tenant that might have, you know, double parking, so we can't count those stalls, but we've actually put those in. We've put some tandem stalls in to help us increase with our, our parking ratio.
How do you regulate those tandem stalls?
Obviously, it's going to have to be the same tenant that, that takes both stalls, so they're not going to be able to back out.
Like a driveway?
Right, yes.
The findings of fact in the staff, staff report say that the batching single occupancy is not being proposed. Would that be allowed? This is maybe for Mr. Wright or Mr. Pepperoni. Would that be allowed if you guys change your mind before you build? It's still allowed, right?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah, unless you specifically approve this as a batching single project, which then allows them to increase his occupancy per unit, which then it's not parked for that.
Okay, and once again, they could still have people that are subletting that they don't know about, and that would just be regulated by complaint, like everywhere else in the city, if somebody violates it?
It is. It's rare for us to have that violation in a building like this that's managed by one group.
Okay.
It's when they sell the units for condos that that tends to happen, but it's rare for that to happen in an apartment building that's managed by a central group.
So ownership change could change things, but for now, as proposed, it meets that.
Yep, yep.
Any questions for Mr. Miller? That was the name of my eighth grade history teacher, so saying that just was weird. All right. Public comments? I see two faces here that have not yet spoken. Are you here to speak to this project?
Yay. It's a great project.
All right, tell us your name and.
Ken Harris, the architect on the project. One thing you'll notice is that the apartment's front on the street, you can't see a car.
I love it.
And we think that's a huge benefit to the city. And it is, we've got a really nice corner element with lots of glass on it, on that northeast corner. We think that's a great element looking over towards the temple. Just a couple of the items we really think are, are making this project really first class. And that, and if you notice the project across the street, it is a great project. This one will be every bit as good, if not better, so.
Thank you. I actually had written that down, that I loved that they were oriented towards the street. Very nice. Any other comments? Okay, we will close public comment, and now we will talk about it. We're going to talk about the project, not about our feelings, or our aches and pains, or any of our heartbreaks, or anything like that. I like the orientation to the street. I like that they're not asking for any special things. I like that we've seen their work already, and they seem to be a good contribution to the downtown area. I noticed this isn't a concept plan. Usually, when we see a zone change, we see a concept plan, right? So is this jumping a step because they're so confident that they like it, or?
Yeah, because so much of the property's already zoned DT, they went straight to project.
Okay, so commissioners, we're seeing more detail in this than we normally see, because we're not going to see it again. So usually, we have that, that caveat that we're going to have one more screening, but, or that someone else will have another screening, but this is it.
Oh, I like it. It's helpful. I love seeing the landscaping there and the, like you said, the front facing makes it very walkable. I like it, and yeah, with the parking in the back.
Now, can you scroll back and just let us see the, how many lots to the south there are? I was just looking at, there's just those two access points. If there would ever be something else that would attach from the south. Maybe further? Going. There we go. So there's just that one parcel, okay. So you really, you're going all the way up to four hundred south, though, right? So it's those four, the four parcels directly to the north, and then the two that you're asking for the rezona. So where the L shape goes over, okay? That vertical one. Okay, thank you. You started to say something, I interrupted you.
Oh, I was. I was just saying that this is a block away from my office, and it's very much in line with the current development patterns of what's going on there. There's that very large development happening on one hundred west and five hundred east.
Nope.
Sorry, five hundred south, sorry, five hundred south, didn't say that. And yeah, just feels like a really good project. Satisfied about it. Just because you brought it up about the deliveries and the visitor parking, I don't think it changes anything here. I think this is, again, also believe this is a great project, but could be a good time for us to make note of that for development services to see, you know, going forward, is there anything that we need to look at there? I mean, it.
I mean, I've never seen it in the code. I don't think anywhere in the code requires a loading zone or delivery driver's owner, or, but, but I think for like tenants, I think that's incredibly helpful, you know, moving in, moving out, loading, unloading. Okay, oh, great. Well, then that's, that would probably address that.
That one?
Yes. If you look right next to the ramp, where the ramp would be.
Maybe I just.
On the southeast?
Yes, if you look in this area right in here, right next to that stairway, we, we have that considered as a loading zone right there.
Like for people to back their moving trucks into.
Bring a U-Haul, back it in there, right there. We tried to make it, you know, easy accessible into the building.
Is there an office, like a management office?
There is, there is a management office up here in the front, correct.
In the same area of that loading zone?
It isn't, no. It would be right up in the corner. We tried to put this kind of our general area coming in, so it would be tough to put the loading zone right there on that, you know, that corner.
But that's where more boxes and things would be, so any other deliveries would be coming in that door.
But as far as getting into the building and, you know, moving in down here, we've thought about that. That came recommended to us by the management company. They think that that's a huge need, and so that's what we tried to follow.
Are there elevators or no?
There are, yes.
Right in that area?
Elevators, uh huh.
Awesome.
Then the same stair shaft?
Yes. We've got, Ken, we've got an elevator here.
It looks like there's one by the office right there.
And one here, right there.
Those are very tenant friendly.
Okay.
I love the tandem parking.
Yeah.
Can you do even more of it?
We tried to maximize that as much as we could.
Okay, I'm going back to the what-if game. What if the use changed? Which underlying zone would be better to have there? Is that, is that a moot point? If the ownership changed, the management changed, does it matter if it's DT one or ITOD? I'm just trying to make sure we're making the best recommendation for a zone change.
Yeah, I don't see one. I would think that DT one probably would be the best bet if somewhere to change it allows for, you know, if they wanted to put in some commercial on the ground floor, is that kind of what you're talking about?
Or like a higher density occupancy or anything like that? Is that ever, would that ever be a problem based on which zone we chose, or would it be the same either way?
I think both zones are pretty comparable in that regard, so if they wanted to change something, they'd have to make sure the parking and everything met, and yeah, I don't think it's.
And ITOD allows for that mixed use op, option as well?
Correct.
That's what I remembered. Hey, commissioners. What do you think?
I think we make a motion to approve it.
All right, well, then let's hear it. Let's start with item three.
All right, I'll, I'll do this. I'll probably mess up. So this is forwarding a recommendation. That's how you, that's how you word the motion. All right, I move to forward a positive recommendation for item number three. Miller General Contractors LLC requests approval of a zone map amendment from the ITOD zone to the DT one zone in order to construct a new apartment building located at four sixty-six, south, one hundred west.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Whitlock to recommend, forward a positive recommendation to the municipal council to approve this zone change request. Any second? Oh, Mr. South has seconded the motion. Do we have any discussion on the motion?
Just one comment. I think that the, from ITOD to DT one, I'd imagine there's a little bit higher development standards with design. Is that, is that, is that a bonus? Is that?
They're the same.
They're the same? They're both good. They're both high standard.
All right. So the motion will stay as stated, and we will be voting yes or no, yea or nay, that we agree with forwarding a positive recommendation to the municipal council to make this zone change. Mr. Whitlock?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
I will vote aye.
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 Okay, that's six votes in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation to the municipal council for item number three. Item number four is administrative, so we actually have the ability to approve or deny this project right here now. Thing we want to talk about, or does someone want to make a motion?
Just want to know that there are some recommendations for conditions.
Yes. Down at the bottom of the staff report, front page?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we want to add anything else to that if we were to make a motion? Okay. I will gladly entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll move to recommend approval or recommend, I'll move to approve.
Okay, he moves to approve.
Item number four, Miller General Contractors request project plan approval for a new one hundred nine unit apartment building, one hundred eight unit apartment building in the DT one zone located at four thirty-four, south, one hundred west downtown neighborhood.
Okay.
With the following conditions, that the remaining CRC comments are addressed for final approval, that stucco not to exceed twenty percent per facade, that lots are combined into one parcel of land under single ownership, and that rezone PLRZ twenty twenty-two, zero, two, two, zero is approved.
Okay, and that refers to item number three. That is a motion by Mr. Gonzalez to approve the project plan in item number four with those four conditions as stated. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Whitlock has seconded the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, we will now have a vote. We are voting yea or nay that we agree with this approval. Mr. Whitlock?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez? I will vote aye.
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 Okay, that's six votes in favor of approving this project plan with the four conditions as stated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we want to stay here some more tonight, or do we have a motion to adjourn?
Before you make a motion to adjourn?
No motions, Mr. Pepperoni.
One thing I really like about this project is they have interior bike lockers, enclosed in, indoor bike lockers. That's the first we've seen of that, and I think that's a really good amenity. Also, Miller built, you know, the project across the street, and they were, they were really good to work with. They did everything they said they were going to do. We had no problems through the construction process. That was really nice. The first time on your agenda was difficult, because I can't remember in my career ever seeing an application to revoke a conditional use permit. So that's a very rare thing that was difficult because of its rarity. I would appreciate it if you would write down over the next couple of days, your thoughts, your ideas, your questions, your frustrations with that first item, because I'd like to have that as a study item session in your next meeting, so we can do a kind of play-by-play on what, what happened and what, why things were done the way they were done. And just talk about some of our processes, because it seemed like that came into the discussion, and just go through some of those. So if you wouldn't mind doing that, we'll have that as a study session item in your next meeting.
Do you want us to submit those to you ahead of time, or just bring them to the next work meeting?
If you could submit them ahead of time, that's always helpful, but if you don't, that's okay, too.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Yeah, there are other types of appeals we could probably talk about, like the, the board of adjustment, the variance you heard on the hillside. That's another really rare one for the planning commission to hear a variance like that. So we'll think about it and think if there's any other ones that maybe we should piggyback into that discussion. Okay. Well, we know we sent them out, because we do that ourselves, and the, and sometimes we get them back where it says not deliverable or something like that, and we keep those. But that's a very low percentage, the ones that end up coming back like that.
That somebody clicked, I did this?
You would have to send like a, like with certified mail, packing number.
Well, in those cases, it's an actual physical postcard that we put in the mail, and then we put the yellow signs on the property, and we do all of that ourselves, because we don't want to trust that an applicant's going to do that. That's too big, that's too much trust.
It's really important to remember, the state statute says we're required to send out a notice. It doesn't say that we're obligated to make sure that they got it.
Otherwise, we'd have to have certified mail on every one of them.
Then it didn't come with their mailers on Tuesday, and they threw it away with all of their junk mail.
I mean, exactly. I mean, that happens all the time, right? You get something in the mail, you think this is junk, you don't pay attention to it. I mean, that's, I'm not saying that's what they did, but it's just, that's not our obligation to make sure that, that everyone saw it, that everyone knows about it, that everyone has decided whether they do or don't want to come. I mean, that's.
Or they're out, they could be out of town. That was in the summer, summer vacations.
So, you know, we follow the obligation to send out the notices. You just have to accept the fact.
Are we still recording? Do we need to? Is it okay that we're talking about this? Okay.
You just have to accept the fact that it's okay that some people may not get that, for whatever reason, nature, you know, I don't know, they didn't pay attention to the dog, ate it, whatever.
Melissa, I, I've done that in other counties, applications for development, where I, what they had me do, the city sent me to the county recorder, they would print off a list of addresses, but then I'd, I'd give it, they'd print off the labels, and I'd give it to the, the city, and the city mailed it, because they.
Want to make sure it gets.
They don't want me in charge of that, saying I, like, I, some crazy developer, like, take things in my own hand. I, I, I trust the city employees more than I would a developer like myself.
There was one city, or there's one letter that came in that said that they did receive it.
There were two, I think.
There were two.
That was actually good to know, because if somebody got it, that means it got sent.
I mean, we didn't read those in. I don't know if we're supposed to do that, but I noticed that one in the pre-work for this, that.
I didn't read them in today, because they were all the same, just the certification of receiving or not receiving, so. It probably have to be.
Well, we do.
Five hundred feet from the boundary.
From the property lines, right. From the property lines, right? We do 500 feet. And if we do 500 feet and it's only half a dozen people, like Brandon said, he did 650, we'll exaggerate it to make sure we're capturing the closest residents. So this statute is 500, but if it looks like it makes sense for us to give six or seven or 1,000 feet, we'll do it.
Well, the the attachment said there were 39 residents or 39 lines of addresses, but when she she read into the record uh comment, testimony from from the June 8th, 18th, and she said there were 78 people that it was mailed to. Or 70, 70 something people was mailed. So it was, it sounds like it was much larger than
The minimum, yeah.
Than the the 500 feet.
Did we handle it okay? I felt like we we were trying to listen to to comments and concerns, but we just kept, after we'd listened, we'd redirect it to this is what we have the ability to do.
I I think you um go out of your way to show the public that you're hearing what they're saying. But that's a two-edged sword because the other side of that is um, when they keep raising issues that aren't germane to the discussion tonight, and then you start asking questions about those non-german issues, it leads them to think.
That we're taking that into account.
Right, you're taking it into account, or they're making progress or something like that on an issue that ultimately you can't.
Was it out of line for me to say um we've already heard about? So so just make your comments be, that was okay to say that?
Yes.
Because I was afraid that was sending the message that we don't actually want to listen to you.
Right.
What's the protocol at the beginning where um Mr. Jeff spoke and then she spoke? Like, how many people get to speak on the original reading?
Well, because it was, it was a rare thing. I felt like that was okay. Was that all right?
Yeah, I I would say let, we should probably think through like putting a time limit on the applicant.
I agree.
The applicant should speak.
Our last meeting, we had a filibuster go on.
Right.
Oh, it was 45 minutes on the applicant and but the applicant, just the applicant only.
Do that. We just say at the beginning of the meeting, the applicant, or maybe you guys have to say you will only get.
I give you, I'm giving you five more minutes, like.
You guys ought to decide, how long do you want?
Yeah, but don't you think that would be good for them to know ahead of time because they come with the presentation?
I I guess what I'm saying is set the standard apart from an issue like this and say in the future, when we have issues, let's only give applicants 10 minutes, 15, whatever you decide, because then you could be consistent from that.
Nobody ever needs more than 15 minutes to show us their project.
I agree.
But we've had so many where they just want to talk and talk and rant and I don't know.
It could be good for us to reiterate that every meeting, like this is, these are the few points of order, like you get this much time to read in your item, you get this much time to comment, and then we hold them to that because otherwise then we have people that are just asking questions randomly to the city attorneys. I mean, that's.
And I think it should also be careful about the same person getting up multiple times. So, yeah.
And and
You did a great job. That was a tough one.
Close the public forum, I think it's important that you 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 don't allow people to continue to speak from the audience, right? Because if you if you let one, because it's kind of
Right.
You don't know how to say no, then it becomes impossible to tell no, say no to the next one, or the next one, or the next one. So as awkward as it is, to the extent that you can say, we're not doing that, thank you.
That was a tough one because it was a question we didn't know. And we wanted the answer to it too, because I wanted to be able to say, help me understand the legal process so that I can tell you we can't do anything about that. You have this as your recourse.
Have that conversation with the attorney.
Yeah, that's fine.
That was okay till someone jumped in.
Yeah.
We're getting ahead on the study session, but should we have initially allowed the representative from the tower company to speak in the in the beginning? Yeah.
After the applicant, like I should have let the applicant go and then is that, so I sort of.
I didn't know who that was. If I'd have known that.
No, Noah told me he was here, I think, and I forgot that.
Oh, I would have jumped up and said, yeah, let's do that, but I didn't know that who that was.
Told me he was here, so I knew he was here, but I didn't, I didn't know where to place him in order and I just forgot to do something about it. So I was glad that he stood up and represented himself so that we could say, yeah, absolutely.
But how the residents feel was.
But that's part of our discussion for the study session. Let's get into that study session. Okay. Right.
I think it had to be a certain distance from the structures too. The barn and the whatever, like I think there was a reason it ended up in that spot, but.
Or it was just inconvenient. If I was a property owner, I wouldn't want to buy the barn or the other buildings.
But that's a really good.
I think it's the nicest looking cell phone tower I've ever seen.
Like a Sequoia.
It does sound good.
You always take the city to race. You always.
Yeah, that's why I kept asking her because I knew she was gonna have our back. Because then it can be on them. They could be wrong, but it's on them, not us.
Yeah. Uh, in this case, it's a weird circular unfortunate situation like that. That's why we have a public here. So that all that is discussed in the public here, you can't publicly publish, but their response is, we didn't know about it. We didn't get the right news. So I understand.
We don't care unless it's actually in our view.
Even more limited because he Jason to the billboard and but even then, he's relying on what his client has told him, their version of the conversation. Who knows?
Noah, I have a a request. When the timer runs out, will you say time? I know that's probably awkward for you, but I feel like I'm kind of a I'm kind of a meanie, and so if I cannot be mean about the time, that would, I think, give it, give me less to argue with them about. And is that okay for someone to abstain any time? I know, we can all do that. Yeah, but. Hmm?
I didn't know what.
But should he, is that, you don't say you have a conflict at the beginning, you just abstain from voting? The original meeting? Okay, will you, um, there was something else we said we wanted to talk, oh, time limit. Will you put that on the agenda for our next meeting? Um, we never um had a motion to adjourn. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Get out of here.